This conference will now be recorded.
Find any water. Damn. I don't do bottles for you. We can bring you a cup of water, but that's the best we could do. So.
I would have driven off this one.
We'll make that happen.
It'd probably be more like a mug. No, they do have cup, like pint glasses in there. Probably not pint glasses. Okay. We will open up this regular meeting for the City Council of Port Orford. It says November 1st on the agenda, but it's actually the 16th, right? Yeah. So it's November 16th, 2023 at 5:30. 3. Um, okay. We'll do the call to order. And then we do have a presentation. It's kind of odd because additions to the agenda is the third thing down, but uh, the superintendent, could you tell me your name?
Aaron Miller.
Aaron Miller is gonna do a short presentation for us, so we'll get through the call to order and then up here. Uh, all right. So please join me for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Boy, it's harder when there's not that many people in here. I know. Messed up my kid. All right, we'll do a quick roll call. Counselor Tidy. Counselor Webb.
Webb present.
Counselor Velisus. Counselor Burns. Counselor Rask.
Here.
And Counselor Bogwitz.
Him here.
Okay, so let's call it over. Roll call.
Check.
Come on up, Mr. Miller.
Do it.
Yeah. Oh, Joseph is probably getting your zip drive ready right now. So we will talk about the consent calendar while we're waiting. You did have, you gave him the zip drive. Okay. So pending presentation, I'm looking at the consent calendar. Um, I think we're gonna pull out the work bus station. And even though item C there, the application for Susan Russell, we do need to pull that out and talk about it. So we will. Oh, right, right. I did get that. I'm glad you reminded me.
Awesome.
Uh, and we will strike uh, E. Um, from there. Mr. Cosrak. Cosrak?
Cosrak.
Sarah.
Cosrak. Eight more times and I'll have it down. I got Velisus right after about three years, so I can do it.
So question. Did? For these.
Yeah.
But like advertise in the paper, because that's, that's what's required of us is to, the paper record is supposed to get a, um, an advertisement. And it's not just like what we feel adequate with or whatever. There's, there's some standards that we're supposed to adhere to because people could say that they didn't know and that they really wanted to serve and that that's cronyism or nepotism or whatever. So we just, I think that we need to really pay, you guys know I'm stickler for this stuff and I apologize, but I think it's important, um, that we follow the protocols that have been established by those who've come ahead of us before us and, and just do what it takes to um, not shoot from the hip, you know? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, under that line of thinking, when, well, I guess we're talking about, so when would the, when would the next emergency commission? Oh, it would be like this month. Okay.
It'll be next month on the, uh, next day.
On the, because, because we, like, you know, we do need to do the right process. You have to have a meeting for some other stuff. Be able to, you know, regardless of which way we go, hit that before the next meeting.
Where is that? Where is that? Cause I don't remember ever seeing that. I think people, I've just seen that people put in that they want to be on a commission and if there's an opening, I mean, I've never seen an advertisement for it. I don't know if.
They get asked because it's so hard to find people.
Yeah, we do. We, we, we will, we, uh, they just advertise it in all the normal places, you know, the
But I mean, do we just have it on the website? Like, oh, there's openings or?
So in the past, the website wasn't a thing, you know, it was kind of defunct at best. And we would advertise at the post office. And at, you know, on, on Matt's paper there, you know, just, it was just our to me, it was, it was like a, um, it was like a safety net or something, or not a safety net, but it was, you could defend yourself. There was, you know, we put it out to see. And then, and there's other times when, when we would, um, we'd get one applicant and that wasn't good enough, you know, we didn't like that person. So we would go back out. Because honestly, mayor doesn't need to appoint anyway. You know, the mayor makes the appointment and we confirm and, and mayor may not, may, may not want to appoint for three or four months. There might be something that he has up his sleeve or something and that's the power that he has. So there's a lot going on with these appointments, especially planning, because there's money. There's always money. Every single thing they do is money. And I just think we gotta really be careful, you know? Really, really follow the rules.
Yeah. So, and that's like, did we even put a paper up in the post office?
No, cause.
Right, no.
I'm just saying that, you know, that's so many things are like that. There's so many details.
Right.
And who knows them until.
That's why I was happy that we might be able to work out the timeline other than that Thanksgiving one. But you don't really want to do a meeting right after Thanksgiving and be digesting.
No, it's actually on that Thursday.
That's even better then.
Everybody had other plans.
Okay, so we are going to circle back. I'm happy, bro. You guys are really dedicated.
Not very devoted.
Just do it here. All right, so back to the script here, we are.
So how do we find out about that?
Are we ready to present with the script?
I know that, uh, what, like the TLT fund, we've, we've actually just said, why don't we just all ask people we know to apply if they're interested and I've
So that's not real official.
We had that discussion.
Right. And that, I think that's especially, and especially touchy one as well, you know, it's.
Where would that be written down?
What's that?
Where's that written down?
See, I don't, I guess I really haven't, I don't know that I've ever searched it out of, of our council rules or, or it's definitely protocol.
It's not in council rules. We'd have to look it up in the ordinance. I usually bring it myself, but with the ordinance, like of the emergency management commission, which was just founded, I don't think it's in there, but it would be like, is it in the, you know, each of the commissions or count, subcommittees has their little thing. I don't think it's in there.
So it would seem like it, so if it's not, and, and it may not be, it would seem like a best practice to advertise in the paper record and in the normal places that you would post for a meeting. Just seems like a best practice. And then if nobody shows up, you, then you go with the one, but it just. I don't know.
And even just hanging it in the post office on the front door would be an argument.
Throw it, you know, cast.
Has anybody seen it? I mean, we don't have a flyer out.
We may have a retired city planner from Reseda, California, that's a million dollar man that's sitting there bored chitinous. And you know what I mean? I, I mean, uh, to come onto one of these planning commissions or something, which is kind of what we got with, with Kevin. He was really experienced and, I mean, they're out there and not to say that anybody's better than anybody else, because we would appoint who we chose, but.
Well, that's why the issue to me is, is the proto, the, the, the
For sure.
The opportunity for everybody to, to have a chance.
I.
A good chance that there will be no bites, but.
There's probably a good chance that there will be no bites.
I, I would ask, how do you feel right now about just saying, let's do it in the post office? Because I think we're, we're really a skeleton crew at this moment uh, for the foreseeable future before the next meeting. I mean, to pull together an ad and stick it in the newspaper and all that jazz and then.
I wouldn't have, the, the, the majority wanted to do, as long as it was, um, within our, you know, I don't want to break any rules. That's and, and so if that's fine with everybody, I, I won't buck the majority on that.
Okay, so, so.
I'm.
To the consent calendar. We'll get back to the consent calendar. We're ready for our presentation, so we can all think about that for a minute. Uh, oh yeah, and before we start, I'm gonna use this thing tonight. Everybody gets three minutes. I'll go around in a circle and then you can have another three minutes after we go around in a circle. So the only change is you'll have to remember what you wanted to rebut for at least two and a half minutes. Okay, moving on. Please come up for your presentation.
Hello, everyone. So I'm Aaron Miller. I'm the new superintendent for Port Orford Langley School District. And I was asked to come and share tonight a little bit about the direction we headed as a school district and some of the measures that we took last spring to gather input from parents, community, staff, board members, our school board members. And so I was going to share what we found out from that work last spring and share what it means for the direction of the district as we move forward. Okay, so as you can see up there, those maxims for the Port Orford School District. Could you put me to full screen, please? Thanks. Um, so Portico is a group that we work with as a school district. Uh, I am in a group where I am coached by another superintendent. Our principal Shane is coached by another superintendent principal in his work. And then I actually am a coach for four other superintendents around the state. And the work that we do is extremely impactful. It's innovative and I think you're gonna see a lot of things, hopefully on the cutting edge, but still within um, you know, good education foundational practices. So one of the things that Portico did for us, if you can go to the next slide, please. Is, uh, they came in last spring. I was fortunate enough to start last spring, even though my official contract didn't begin until July 1. Uh, but they came in and worked with our staff on an afternoon staff meeting. And then they came in one evening and worked with community, which included community board members and some students. And then our, our teachers did the same process with our students, uh, in kindergarten through 12th. Great. So stakeholders at these meetings were asked to describe what an ideal school would look like, describe the characteristics, skills, mindsets and behaviors that students need in order to prepare for their future and identify the unique personality of the school community and the traits most valued in the community by creatively imagining their school as an animal and describing how it represents the school. Every time I've seen this happen and I hear the part about describe an animal, it takes me to a different place. And I think this is a pretty hokey around things, but it really did a lot to inform us and I've seen it inform several other districts as well. Next slide, please. So as the community and, um, and the groups, uh, went through this activity, uh, they were asked to describe what is what characteristics, uh, make a student ready for life after graduation. Uh, and, and through that questioning process and through the development of the, the spirit animal, I am so sorry. Through the development of a spirit animal, um, came up with these words that describe what people want to see, what people in Port Orford, staff, students and community and parents want to see from, uh, from our kids. And these are the words that arose to the top. The bigger the word, the more often they came up in the surveys. The smaller words came up often, but were not uh, the most important. So you can see helpful, smart, hardworking, skilled, determined, ethical.
What is ethical?
It's one of the bigger ones. Okay, next slide, please. So, uh, as those words uh, Portico's approach looks at learning in four different areas. And they are go, think, act and know. And our typical day job at school is the no part. Teaching kids, you know, dates, important, uh, figures in history, math facts, reading skills. All of those things are critical to what we do for our day job. But when you ask people that have, uh, you know, like we did with the community teachers, people that are at work, successful in their, um, in their endeavors and their careers, the content knowledge and the know is the lowest area of concern. We see this from businesses, um, throughout the state and throughout the nation. Um, we've heard this for years, that the most critical skills are not necessarily what they know, but they need to be able to be on time. They need to show up ready to learn. Uh, they need to have the basic foundations of skills, but the really important things that they learn in the career and life really happen in career and life. And we need as schools to start addressing that better and continue to provide the foundational educational academic points, but at the same time hit those other skills that are so critical to them being successful and to all of us being in our success. We need to make sure that we're providing opportunities for them to practice and obtain those skills. So, um, this is just a percentage. That graph before. One more. Oh, back one. That's that circle. Yeah, that, that graph there really shows, um, where those skills lie in what was shared as important from people here in Port Orford. Those percentages are very similar to other areas in the state, other small districts throughout the state, large districts. Those same percentages, they're, they're relatively close. But you'll notice that ownership of learning and self-management are huge pieces that people feel contributed to their success and will contribute to the success of our students. And so we're working hard to provide some of those opportunities and increase those opportunities for our kids. Next slide, please. This slide shows a little bit of the product that came out of the animal pictures and you probably can't see the words very well, but, um, this is a meaningful piece is students and families were asked to develop an animal and share the characteristics that represented what we want from our students, what we want them to be able to leave us, um, when they graduate. Uh, the kindergarten group up in the right-hand side, uh, drew a horse. Um, they had part of their animal as a horse, cause it's strong, helpful. Good. They have wings on their horse to represent a cat, a crow, because crows think and they're thoughtful. And then I really loved this part about the kindergarten one. They also made it part of a dragon. And that was because dragons are wonderful and they're magical. And we should all strive for. So, um, that's just a little sample of how we came up with that. Next slide, please. Example of what the activity was. This is another way to demonstrate the words that were shared um, and the important, um, elements of what our community cares about. And so once all of this information was gathered, all the, um, the students, the staff, parents and the community. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the group at Portico evaluated it's all that input, looks at the animals looks at what's important for each school district and then creates maxims, um, mantras for each district. For us, you can tell that it really takes into account our, our position here at the coast. But it also takes into account those elements that community wanted to see for our students. We want them to be prepared for their future. We want them to be able to navigate the challenges that throws at them and us and sort of anchor in our community. And that doesn't necessarily mean come back here and be a part of this community, which it is, because we know several people stay here, several people leave, get edu, go to further education and come back. And we want that for a strong community, but anchoring in their community here or wherever they choose to live. To be a part of that and to really be a leader and have the skills and the characteristics that will help them be successful and whatever they choose, wherever they choose. So these three maxims, um, are what we are working with at our schools. This is the logo that came up for the school district. If we go to the next one, uh, there is a version that is set for Pacific High School and the Pirates. And then there is a third one uh, that is there for the Driftwood Eagles. All the same, um, all the same sayings and maxims, but a little different logo to tie into each building. And I know I've taken up a lot of time here. My apologies. I've got one more slide to share with you because the most important thing is not that we up with slogans and a marketing practice, although that is a portion of what this does. What's important and critical for us now is as a staff to figure out ways that we can help our students prepare, help them navigate those challenges and opportunities so that they do have experiences that are going to anchor them in our community. Um, we, we have started this process. We have Friday early release. So, uh, kids leave early on Fridays and, um, on some of those Fridays, we are working specifically on how we can address those maxims and impact our students. And then also, how do we with our staff to prepare our staff, help them navigate their challenges and help them navigate or anchor more in our community? So we're all working together for our students and their future. That's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Aaron. Great to meet you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, welcome to town. That's it.
Could, if, um, if I wanted to get a copy, do you have a copy of that? Would you be willing to share?
Um, yeah, I can share that.
I'd love it if you wouldn't mind sending me a copy.
Could you write me down your email address and I'll get it to you. It probably won't be until Monday.
That's fine.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, moving on to item three, consent calendar. We're just gonna go ahead and, uh, move the applications to eight D. We'll drop those down in your business, eight D. Uh, we're gonna put the work bus station as eight E. And I think the OLCC license is okay on the consent calendar. Yeah, so basically what's gonna be on the consent calendar right now is the minutes and the OLCC license. And we're dropping the applications to eight D and the works on mission to eight E. So I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes and the temporary OLCC license.
I make a motion to accept the minutes and the OLCC license.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on either one of those? Or anything on the minutes that you see?
Is, OLCC, real quick, is, it just says for food. I know OLCC is weird. Do you have to provide hot food or can you just provide finger foods? That was it. You know what I mean? Like, cause it has their thing. It's on page 18 is, is their license. I don't know if it's just a technicality or not. You know what I mean?
Well, and I know, and it's, I guess you kind of make the assumption that, you know, that when they fill this out, the OLCC will call them.
Yep. But that's it. That's, that's all I had. So I'm good with it otherwise.
I, you are correct on the certain amount of foods. And I don't think there should have been whiskey, so that makes it a lot easier.
Got it. It's just beer and wine. Got it. I'm good.
Anything on the minutes? Anyone?
The minutes looked amazing. You could find everything.
There's couples, typos, but I, I like it.
You could find everything very easily with these minutes. And then if we had questions to go back to the video, he has exactly where we, the video where you go look for it. I really enjoy these ones.
Exactly. How you do it? This is how you do it.
These look good, Joseph. Thank you.
Thanks, Joseph.
Thank you, Joseph.
Me? No, I'm not easy. This is.
Can I consider that a consensus or? Uh, no, we're gonna call for a vote. Okay. So you mean as far as the style of minutes? No, you're talking about the consent calendar? Yeah. Uh, do you wanna call out any of those typos?
Uh, the one I saw was, eh, you know, motion, um, first page. See, I, I have not been as thorough with this packet as, as I would have liked to. Some spelling here and there. I, I just, oh, okay, E, uh, page two, number four. Uh, E, vote. The motion passes unanimously. Motion's misspelled. I, you know, I just, I don't know how tight you guys want to get with that stuff. It always looks good when it's all spelled right, but.
And all of it's like, you don't have to retract your motion type of thing. So anything?
What's that?
On the clerical stuff, like punctuation and then.
Was correction.
We did that for a while where it was every little change was retract your motion.
And five A on the third line, it's, the city is unable, it's a capital U. You should probably just say small U. This is just not, I mean, I think it's great.
No, it is. This is really well put together.
Yeah, the contents, they're big deal. Format.
Still wonder if it's a little bit more involved than it needs to be, but it's.
It does help remind you.
It, it does. What I like about it is it also is, while it does do that, it also makes you agree with those very fine details. You know what I mean? Yep, that's what we said. And sometimes I can't remember if that's exactly what it was. I can remember, we had a discussion. But anyway.
But I think Joseph goes back and actually looks at it, so.
Looks like it's good work.
And that's what's so nice about the times.
Timestamps are invaluable.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call for a vote. Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes. Yes.
Counselor Rask. Counselor Bogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Whoa. Uh, Counselor Burns?
Burns, yes.
And Counselor Tidy?
And I'm back, I guess. I'm, yeah. Sorry. Yes.
All right, so, uh, all right, moving on. Uh, citizens' concerns. Do we have a list back there? Uh, there's only four of you, so raise your hand if you want. Is there anyone online with a citizen concern?
Yes, Jen Bailey.
Go right ahead.
Hey, so this is Jen Bailey.
Say your address, please, for the record.
Four eighteen sixteenth street. Um, and I just wanted to update you all about the ad hoc committee about, for the homeless location. Um, Jen Head is out of town and Perry missed our last meeting and Jen didn't have a chance to update her. So Jen just asked me to update you all. Um, which just briefly, we did have a meeting, um, and our second meeting and we reviewed maps uh, of the, all the city property and we were able to rule out some properties. But in general, since it seems like the situation is de-escalated recently, uh, we're gonna continue to meet and come up with a proposal for you all, but not, not within a month. And, um, Andrew Perry, Officer Perry, who is part of our committee, pointed out that this time of year, like late fall, winter, isn't a great time to really get an indication of how many people will need to find a place to rest. Uh, because the population is lower this time of year. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Anyone else online? You gonna wait to say it?
I'm not gonna say it.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say it. Thank you.
Okay, so now we are moving on to department. Okay, so now we are moving on to departmental reports. Admin, as you know, we had our pro tem resign a few weeks ago. He sure carried a lot of balls forward for us, so I really appreciate that. And we have a Civil West update and Ann's a lot smarter than me, so I should just pass it on over to her.
I don't know about that. I would just say that we have been trying to keep many of those balls up in the air that John was working on and that I've been working on some of them. And with Civil West, we've got a number of things. We had a meeting with John, Isadora, Pat and I and Civil West to make sure that the dredging permit is still advancing. And I'm pleased to say it is, there's a little bit of an iterative process there. You might have more to say on it, John, but they're still working on it. And also considering how to move forward with the brick grant and if that's possible. And so that's something we are still considering, how to proceed with that. They've sent us a proposal, but not an estimate yet. And that's something I'm continuing to do some research on to figure out what's the best way to go with that. So that's kind of the big stuff I was thinking of. Pat, is there anything further to say or John on that Civil West update?
Other than meters, are we moving forward with that?
Sold.
Sold out.
Been on my report for like six months.
Yeah.
Is that because of the contract?
Well, that was just because we.
Stuff.
I think, I think there's appetite for it.
I think what happened, what happened to it is that John Huddle looked into the contract and he found that the details in the contract were different than what it, we, our impression was of it. And it was one of those things with a lot of small print. And so I think that's kind of where we got hung up and we were gonna either ask them to come back or we were gonna, he was gonna look into it more. So that's one of those many balls that he was working on that has fallen now. And we've, we're gonna have to prioritize different ones of them. So anyway.
I'll see if I can get back in touch with that vendor.
If it was, if it was a flow for them to.
I was a little weird, man, that was a little weird. I think the biggest holdup was that contract language. It was so vague and hard to read that you couldn't really decide, you know.
If we're getting in trouble.
And wasn't there something about how we thought it was gonna help us detect leaks everywhere, but then it actually, it turned out to maybe not only be on the other side of the meter or something?
It wangled it, but it wouldn't pinpoint it. It would give you an area of twenty or thirty feet and say it's in this area. So it narrows it down, but it doesn't say it's right exactly here, nothing does that yet. But that did, that, you remind me, that vendor did come through town about a month ago and their contract with Camstruck is no longer with Camstruck. It's now with, oh, who's the big group down south? Not Budge, but the other one, McQ, Q's? Shoot, I can't think of his name. I can't think of that other name, but it's a direct competitor of Budge. It's, shoot.
United?
I can't remember for the life of me. But at any rate, somehow that contract went from these guys to a different company with Camstruck. It's super loud, like unbelievably loud, so. So he did say that he was supposed to send me some stuff on the newer meters, the different meters they're gonna carry, but the contract would still be viable, but it'd be with a different meter brand is the way I understood it. Unless we were able to act within seven weeks and then there was still enough in stock at that time to be able to push it through. But it was like, really? So, yeah, I think I probably, I think you're right, I need to circle back and get more, I need to dig into that, but.
It'd be great to have a community that's using them.
Well, we did, we had four or five, we had, I think, eight or nine references. I sent those all to John to verify and we did check and for the most part, everybody was happy with the, with the meter and with the contract. We didn't have any negatives that I remember.
I don't remember that we ever, that the council ever saw that because I remember trying to Google it and it was just like some company in Louisiana or some city.
No, it was actually cities listed in Oregon that were under the, the Camstruck meter.
I got the contract, I can't remember, I think John sent it to us.
Yeah.
And man.
And it was super hard to read.
I couldn't even get past the first.
So, yeah, I'll circle back and I'll dig into that and see where we're at with that guy and then see if there's a, what the other option is for meters, because it would be nice to get started.
It'd be helpful for.
Because I think that's other half of our water loss that we're not accounting for is on bad rates for meters. Yeah, they didn't get any tighter. Right, they don't get any tighter.
Oh, I have one other thing, I'm sorry, that I was supposed to say, which is this thing in the packet, I'm looking right at it. So one of the important things that we had with the meeting with Civil West is that they, they talked to us about all the things that this is this thing in your packet, all the services that they provide. And so they actually do provide grant writing services as well as all sorts of things. And so we talked about the idea of them, them helping us with the grant. Last time, if you recall, our city administrator wrote the grant and they just provided like the figures for the amounts of money. They have staff that can help with grant writing. And they also sent us a booklet that had a bunch of grants in it. And it was really fabulous because I know we've had this conversation, this body about like, oh, we need to have a grant writer looking for grants. Well, for most of what we need as a city, there's probably about twenty-five grants. And they're all in there, all the dates are in there, you know, for park stuff, for water stuff. And so anyway, I think it was a positive meeting. It made me feel like there could be a benefit to having them do the grant because then it's all together and integrated, they've got the data, they've got our information. And I'm just doing a little bit more due diligence to see what the other opportunities are. But anyway, so one, that was another thing about the brick grant.
You know, I really liked that Pat brought up that we could share your grant writer meeting. And I really thought that was a cool idea so that we didn't have to pull one all the time. I remember you saying, you guys have a grant writer report?
Oh, company, yeah, yeah.
Right, a company. And there was some way maybe we could, the city could partner with it and get a few out.
Worth their weight in gold. They really are.
They are, I agree a hundred percent.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't take much to throw them in the garbage can, so.
Yeah, and all that time.
I suppose though.
And there's also, and I'll get to this when I do the watershed liaison report, there's also a lot of public agencies like CCD that are totally, they just are really individuals who really wanna help our little city and are willing to help us and, you know, do grant writing that might be less expensive. So there are those options and those are also professional people who's, who make their living helping little towns. And so I feel like I've been connecting with some of those people. So anyway, still.
I didn't necessarily want to, but I did get on the board of directors for the CCD this month, so hopefully that'll help.
Do you wanna go ahead and cover that thing we stuck in the packet for the water testing too?
Oh, I see, yeah, I was gonna bring that up. Did you get that email earlier?
I printed it and stuck it in the packet. The one from Tina at the end of the day?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I did, yeah, I got her last email, but I didn't read it.
Oh, but the one about the water testing, you're right.
Yeah, I did, and I printed that, threw that in there somewhere.
I don't see it in here, but John was just telling me, by the way, because we talked about it, he thinks it's a really good thing to move forward with that, so that water.
Ironically, when me and Ann were in the office the other day, there was an old water improvement plan that kind of, you know, and ten years ago, they deemed it no good.
Right.
So I'll be surprised if it changes, but.
Me too. But it has.
But that's the rub I'm against right now is when you have literature from ten years ago that says that this lake isn't really safe, or you got three times as many weeds as you did in there ten years ago, so. But.
But doesn't the sewer?
It's like twenty-eight hundred dollars to find out.
Weed goes under it, right? Water though.
We stay, and we stabilized the lake since then, lake level.
So it's good, man, it's a big mud puddle.
The outfall goes nowhere.
No, it's out.
Well, it could do two things, it could tell us that the source is completely unviable or it could tell us, and if that happens, then we know we have a single source and we need to improve upon the impound period.
But that's where the rub is, it kinda already says it's not viable. But.
You're right.
Mill pond is worth checking out.
I think so.
Oh, at the park?
Sorry, I digress and started talking to John. So basically what we have on the table is I think it's around three grand to do three tests at three levels. Is that what they came up with? Is that four tests, three depths?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I told him to keep it under five.
They tried.
Two hundred over.
Okay, so that's what we're up against is we're looking at four different tests. And that was at Pinehurst Boat Round, three tests out towards the middle of the lake and then one in the mill pond over by the park. And John's right, that's the only way we're going to.
What, what's it?
And one of the reasons.
What are you testing mill pond for?
And it's right next to the plant.
Yeah. It's cleaner?
It may be or it may not be.
I don't know, man, I lived on that thing and.
Yeah, no, on the backside there, but in the front, but that's why.
It's like three feet deep.
To be clear, one of the reasons that.
You know, that is a good point, if it isn't that deep.
There's not a lot of water there.
One, one of the reasons that this, that this scenario has come up is that they were looking for places to do additional raw water storage. And one of the best places to put, let's say, like a new big tank is right next to the water treatment plant. And also, when we do our dredging, when we have emergencies, like we often have, like cases where we're really close to not having enough water, the idea is to have a secondary backup. And it's not like we're gonna use it all the time, but we might need to have a backup. So that's kind of why it's urgent. And at first I was, kinda had the feeling of like, oh, do we want this as our water source? It's not like our water source, it's like we need something to backup. So anyway, that's, just to give a little bit more context, that was really helpful to me to understand that part.
No, what about the well that was there at the mill pond?
We researched the wells like.
That's capped?
A half ago and we didn't.
Nobody knows anything about it, there's no record on it.
We talked about that last year because we were looking at the water rights and we were looking at the different possibilities and it fizzled out and that's why we went back to talking about the lake and these other things, I thought.
There was nothing on the well log?
No, we never found any documentation on that well that supposedly was there.
I, I thought you said there was, that looked at all the, that they looked at the idea of having a series of wells that would feed into.
They did look at placing new wells, but when we were originally talking, there was supposed to be a well down by Mill Pond somewhere on site, which we can't find any record of a documentation on. So I don't know if it was there or not.
Okay, so that'd have been in the seventies, maybe.
Maybe. That was prior to the plan.
I wanna say it's off the back.
That sounded like Tim.
Go ahead, Tim.
Hey, so I was playing, I was playing around in the Oregon well logs and I found that that well in there, there at the park had been capped years ago.
Oh, so there, there was a well?
Yep, and I found where it had been, it had been reported that it had been abandoned.
Does it show a location by chance?
It's been a couple of years since I found that, John, but I can research it and try to find it again and get you that information.
Yeah, I'd like to know if it's actually.
Cause if we could test that water there, I mean, it's right there.
I know, I've seen it, but they might have just graded over the top of it.
And the other thing John explained to me is that, that like the amount of water that the city needs is like three hundred and fifty gallons per minute, whereas a well produces like maybe three gallons. And so that's, it could be part of something, but it can't be like, you know.
Yeah, it'd have to go into a tank system and then be pumped out of the tank to be treated, to have enough flow or.
There are wells in, in our, there are wells in, outside of Port Orford that are three hundred gallons per minute.
Wow. That would.
It just depends.
And the only other option is to go back to talk about the DD street. And so, I mean, it's not as great, but that's a third option. If this doesn't work or if the water tests are really bad, we could look into lining that tank and hooking it up.
For the storage aspect.
Right, and just to throw the numbers out there, our tank on Coast Guard Hill is thirty-three thousand gallons a foot. So even a hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank would give us that four or five feet that we're always struggling to, to get back. So it's an option. I'm just saying we have options and just wanted everybody to know that it's three grand to do these water tests for this. But you're also talking reverse osmosis maybe and a bunch of treatment, but maybe not for raw water, right?
Uh, it would really depend on OHA.
And the water, yeah, what it turns out to be.
Yes, what you're putting in it.
So do you, John, as the head of public works, it's a good idea to do these tests?
I think it is because it'll either eliminate it or give us a secondary source. And then if it's off the table, it's off the table, we're not wasting time about it.
Right, I like that.
It hurts to look into it, I mean, ten years in the long term.
So everybody good with that path right now?
Yeah.
Okay, and then last part of the, I guess it could be administrative or whatever, but me and Ann were talking earlier today about, you know, our next pro tem and the process of doing that. And I wanted you guys to consider maybe a committee of two or three of you just to kinda keep that ball rolling, so we're not talking about it once a month.
This is.
Has to be two or less.
It's on, we have that on eight E.
No, four is a question.
We have that on eight E, by the way, pro tem city administrator decision.
Uh, it was on the second page, so let's talk about it then. All right, so.
And what about an attorney? I haven't heard anything about.
I can tell you a little bit about that. So I was just doing some research into how we do all this stuff and the way theoretically that we need to find an attorney is that we have to prepare, ask for a proposal, RFP, and ask for a proposal. And Shayla is gonna be away for about two weeks, but she said she'd be willing to help us when she gets back in December first to do that. I, through just talking to people, I kinda got a bead on one person who might be able to help us. And also Gary Milliman told me that the city of Brookings has ended up just hiring somebody that they hire by the hour that doesn't even come to their, that comes to their meetings virtually. So that's unfortunate, I think we've really been spoiled having Shayla as an actual kind of in-house attorney who knows our city well. But that's, that's just some more information about the kinds of things other cities are doing. And so we'll have to, I think, see what we get.
So we're waiting, we'll just wait for Shayla to get back and get that written up and.
I think that's kind of what I'm thinking, no, February, December first is gonna come pretty quick. And maybe when we talk about the pro tem decision, maybe we just have like a hiring committee or something, or maybe we distribute it up, I don't know.
Yeah, because she's just bugged down with cases and we won't see her. We, I'm gonna talk about it later, but we need to have a meeting on December fifth for some stuff, so.
What day is that? What day? Did you say it this?
Number five? Yeah, okay. Finance, did everybody get a chance to look at the financial report? And do you have any questions for me to pass on to?
I had a chance to talk to David about my question, so I'm, I'm good.
Good.
I was just still trying to figure out the, the negatives, which, which minus is our negative and which minus is our positive, but I, I got it. And, and he also explained to me some of the numbers where we're in the red. Let's say in public safety, it's, it's the timing of the, the revenues coming in, so.
Yeah, it does mess with you though, those minuses, because it's short of the budget, but not short of the budget. Yeah, you gotta worry about those negatives more towards the end of the year, but they look bad right now. Okay, any questions on the finance? Any question on John's public works report or anything you wanna highlight, John?
Yeah, we do need to discuss, I think we've, I think I've mentioned it like three times, but. No. I'm gonna donate my for that. So Dick Hurd, cleaning up the hummus ponds, pond, excuse me, is gonna be here, I think, Monday. And we're gonna walk through the whole evolution of what this is gonna take. And the expenditure is a hundred and ninety-ish K. Hasn't been done that we know of, so it is at max capacity. In that same light, we had a DEQ surprise inspection. Went excellent. I was impressed. He was very thorough, went through all the books, went through the paperwork, quizzed us, we walked through the whole thing. He basically said, I'm really glad to see the amount of maintenance and stuff that's been fixed since the last time, which was right before COVID. But he was attention to detail and the hummus pond came up. And this is the month we would have to go out and do a sludge dub survey and resubmit our NDS permit and all that crap. And he said, basically, if you're gonna clean it, because you say you got a guy coming to clean it, then you don't have to do that, but make sure you inform me. So we sent him an email to keep him in the loop. DEQ's had a, quite a change in employees and shifted management and supervisors to different areas, so. Anyway, he's gonna come by every three years and then whenever we need. So the discussion will be, because me and Ann both swore we had it in the budget, neither of us could find it. So Mr. Hurd says he's more than willing to take payments from the city, doesn't wanna bankrupt us, but he is like the only guy from Portland to mid northern. But he is like the only guy from Portland to mid northern California that actually does this. So it's not like we can get other quotes, so.
So John, have you talked to to David Johnson about that? Like where we can find that money?
I haven't seen him. I just, I just haven't. I just keep mentioning him, but now he's going to be here on Monday, so I need to be able to give the guy an answer.
Okay.
We can't use any of that money that's for the.
I don't know. We have that pending.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Improvement fee, frequent money? I don't know.
Probably not yet.
It's part of the treatment because that's all the dead stuff once one.
I'd be a lot more.
I don't know, but.
I can reach out to to John or to David and ask him. But somehow, I mean, we need to figure out, you know, since we're in this transition now without an administrator, we have to figure out how to communicate well together on these kinds of things, because this is super important. I know you've been bringing it up numerous times. And we got to figure out, you know, how we get the money for that.
Yeah, well, one good thing was wastewater was into positive and water borrowed from wastewater. So I think there's funds there. I just don't know if there's enough to cover the whole thing or. I mean, if Dick's letting us spread it out, we could spread it across two budget years and that wouldn't hurt near as bad.
How many years did he say?
Been making payments if we, you know, like we have nothing budgeted for it, then we could burn up all our contingency. But we can also do a supplemental budget if we have to, so it's not.
Which I think we have to do anyway. Well, how many, how many years did he say he was willing to spread it on?
He didn't say. He just said we could make payments.
So we could propose.
I can clarify that on Monday when we do the walkthrough and stuff.
Could, yeah, because we we could see where we're at, like if we're going to get, if we could even use some of the money, the seven fifty. Then that could change about how many, how long we would want to go. If we wanted to do four or five years or if we wanted to do two years or.
I wonder if we could use some of the S D Cs or if it wouldn't be called improvement.
Oh, my gosh.
What happened?
Holy smokes.
The lizard.
What is it? Alimander.
My gosh, how did you get in here?
Well, I was like, what is Pat doing?
Sounds just ain't the same.
Like, what is Pat doing? He's like crawling more towards.
Is it, is there anything that you know about for this, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar?
I'd love to get an answer on that because we've got a top ten project.
I, we, you know, we had, we were putting, we, we had asked to have a, I had asked to have a workshop on it before John left. And we, we of course are not having workshop on that. I think Pat has reached out to to Business Oregon to try to find out more information about the seven fifty K, which is what where we're at. We still need to get information about the specifics of that.
Basically, yeah, we've not gotten a word letter. The application hasn't went out. Pretty much still figuring out some of the parameters to see if it's available.
Because it looks like there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, I, I, John sent out, I I thought you two got an email from John and there were four attachments.
All the possibilities.
It looked like that was what was, had been approved and then we were going to have to like jump through a bunch of hoops.
I I never got that, I don't think.
I, I didn't. You should have got it too. I saw.
Well, and we were told by, well, we weren't told.
I saw something when I see.
I thought we weren't going to have to do anything for the city.
Oh, we got.
We were under the impression that there is a very specific use for that money and that it is.
On the very last page of one of those four documents, it it literally says for project. You know, the very last page is titled that.
So I didn't see that either.
I may have seen parts of it just from John.
It was like I said, I'm like the fourth attachment, like the very last page of like page eleven. It literally says what it's supposed to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's.
And I think there's sort of some disparate like realities there, like there's like the actual costs. And like there's some detail, there's some major details that have to be.
Can we ask the person that really helped push this along at the senate level? Can we ask his office to come, you know, they might have more information since that's the one that really.
Well, we actually, we did have a meeting.
I think that's where we were told there's a very specific view for this money.
Pat and I.
Yeah, and that's why I want to say like that that seems like it might have been well before us as counselors. And, you know, it sounds like it's ten plus years in the making that maybe, I don't know.
No, because this was just a Christmas tree bill where the legislators get together and make deals at the end of the cycle. And, you know, with money left available, it sounds worse than I made it just sound, but they call it a Christmas tree bill for.
And I just want to know what part of the present we get and where we get to use our present.
Well, so the, what we learned is that it has to be very specific for recycling of water, very specifically. The, our, our senator really wants us to use it for something very specific. And whether it's actually possible to do that specific thing is, I think, what we're still trying to figure out. Because there are very specific contracting details through Business Oregon. So there's some, there's a lot of things to figure out and that's, John Huddle was starting to go down that path to help us because it's kind of complicated, I guess, is.
Well, we are talking with the I F A and.
Business Oregon, right? You're talking to Tony or who are you? I thought you talked, I, I thought you were talking to Tony Bean about this. I don't remember.
Yeah, but I thought she was I F A. Oh, no, she used to be I F A. The last time I talked to her, I think you're right. Now she is Business Oregon. But either way, we're talking with her and she's the lady that puts the stipulations on the money. And we're trying, we're making sure that it can happen.
I just want to make sure we don't miss out on the money that's appropriated for our town of some sort, you know what I mean? Like if we get to use it or not.
I think it could create problems.
I know, but I'm just saying like, I want to, I want to get an answer so we can.
That's what we're, that's what we were really trying to do. And as you know, we've like gotten hit with like a number of curveballs, so we got to like prioritize.
Wrong, Brett, but when we started that conversation, it was at no cost for the city.
Zero. We were getting fire plugs and, you know, we were getting all kind of cool stuff, you know what I'm saying?
And there's still the benefit of a secondary outfall, but the first, like, there was no liability when.
Well, that, that's why there was no cost. It was, it was, we weren't going to sell it. Golf courses buy affluent all over the nation.
I know, you're still mad at me about that. But yeah, so that's kind of what we're up against. It's pending still and I'll keep you posted as soon as we.
And and I think, you know, we, I mean, I think when we get to having that workshop to understand what the details are or when we get to that information, that's really important. I personally think there's probably a lot of people in the community who would like to have a broader conversation about it too, before we go down that path. Which the community, I will just voice, because I'm the more recent council member, has not really ever had a chance to have a conversation about that. And I think, you know, there'd be, it's could be a divisive converse conversation, but I think it would also just be good to listen and learn. I'd like to.
Know what?
Just about if this is, if that's, if it turns out that that's what we are going to do to just listen to our citizens about whether they want to do that or not.
Giving, giving them the affluent.
Okay, well, that's, I think that would be a good idea, but if nobody else.
Those are my favorite kind of meetings.
You can vote me, you can vote me. You can vote me off the island.
You're saying to give them the affluent to make that decision or to golf course decision?
I think she means more like we've had all these conditional use hearings and we've had, you know, we've had a lot of instances where we can't talk about it as a whole. And the community wants to weigh in on it or we need to, like, it goes back to that transparency thing.
Project, the whole project.
Yes.
Or just like if we're going to go, if, I mean, if it turns out we have to invest city resources in this part of a future, just to hear what people have to say about it. And it may or may not turn out that we have that option, depending on what the constraints on the money are. We, 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 there's sort of two parts of it. There's that detailed nuts and bolts granular part. And then there's like, what do we want to do as a community and what are pros and cons of doing this or that? And let's be, let's have an open conversation so everybody can know, you know, so we can all learn and figure it out. And that's kind of how I.
It's been standing room only in this, in this chambers with multiple occasions.
I can't wait.
I love it.
Me too. I'm excited already.
I thought I was done with it, honestly.
Yeah.
It should be revenue generating.
Well, what else you got, John, on public works?
That's it, I'm good.
Okay, moving on to police. Everybody got Hank's report? Hank, you got anything for us? Thank you, guys. Hey.
Hey, can I?
Time out. Thank you so much. The police levy, how well it went really is a reflection on you guys. So much, much appreciated. Thank you.
And I also want to add too that I know I've been hearing from citizens, like, how come we don't have a police report in the newspaper? And just to let people know, I don't know if you wrote it, Hank, because I know it's coming back. It is because I'm just going to say it in case anybody wants to hear it. It's because of the county hack and the the record system was down and stuff that we haven't had that. So it's coming since April twenty-sixth, but it's coming back now, right? It's back. So thank you.
Is it a little bit out of time coming back? Is that how it's, is that what's going on? A little bit out of time or?
Everything.
Passities are increasing a little bit out of time or? They do miss it. I've heard the same.
We better, if that happens, we might want to consider paying the ransom. That was.
I have enough of my C M I justice program back so I can do weekly or every other week media reports now. And they're pretty accurate. We lost so much data, it's kind of hard to go back. I I've recovered about all that I can by memory and what they were able to salvage. But then the council reports will be back to where they used to be, so I'm happy about that. Just an ongoing mess trying to clean things up, but we're in better shape now than we were a month ago.
Yeah, we didn't pay them, did we?
We what?
County didn't pay them.
No, and it's sad because I came here in fourteen and the database went back to, I believe, the strongest portion to oh nine. And some of our frequent flyers were four, five hundred, six hundred contacts.
Wow.
So we could go back and look at every one of those, see previous behavior and that's gone now. So we're started from scratch from April sixth. Sad.
At least everybody gets a reset.
Yeah, I'm sure some local citizens are happy.
Hey, we should put an article on that. Hey, you know, you got a clean slate now, so keep it up.
Maybe that has something to do with the election number.
Anything else, Hank?
Thanks, Hank.
Thanks, chief.
Planning, you got anything for us, Joseph?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good, good.
Mayor's report, I can hit that at the admin report. Uh, I'm trying to bring as much to you as possible, but the daily stuff and stuff that we've already talked about. I'm not being as cautious as I usually am because we just need to get stuff done. Nothing money wise, nothing that we haven't talked about. But uh, try not to walk on eggshells, just trying to keep the ball rolling with the stuff that we have had already. Uh, liaison reports, uh, councillor Webb.
Oh, for what we met, what we had, we had a. Couple of get togethers with the engineers for the camp, the crane replacement project. Uh, and they came out, I did it onsite here, was that last week or week before?
Onsite was last month, but.
Was it last month?
Yeah.
Yeah, then they, excuse me, they brought back some ideas. And we sent them away with some more thinking to do and and we're moving forward nicely there, I think. It's, uh, this is really going to happen. It's going to be a nice, a nice big improvement.
Yeah, once we get the decision on the placement made, then it's.
Well, it's tough, yeah. I mean, you're talking about, you're trying to expand capacities. Where do you position things? And you have your historical mind telling you, no, 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 you know what I mean? But you're, you're looking at a, a future and it's been kind of tricky. It really has to.
Sure it has.
Make things work.
We have so many variables.
Yeah, there's so much other variables. You don't even think about the placement. It's like a big issue. But yeah. Yeah, anyway, that's, that's, I think about it for the port, Pat, that I can think of.
Yeah.
You know, there's a chance for the city to partner with the, when Terry was here, she asked me, it was probably six or seven years ago. She asked me about Dock Road and D O T and some money and this and that. Well, the port does have a grant that we received to do a study on hardening.
Dock road, yeah, road hardening.
Road hardening for Dock Road that goes, the city owns most of the road, down to about where the Fisherman's Memorial is. And that slope's very unstable. And we, what do we get, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand? Yeah, so we got some, some money to study it and then we have a grant opportunity queued up and and so we're going to take this, what we get and throw it back at them. And and I don't know if the, I don't know, you know, how much of that, there's going to be a point when that's the city's street. And if we decide that, you know, the port decides that.
Yeah, no, there has to be some.
It's a FEMA grant, it's, it's brick grant, it's, um, you know, one way in and one way out down there and and it's so. I think there's going to have to be some intergovernmental agreement prepared. Probably should have already started on it. But something's going to have to happen there with the road.
Moving forward. Maybe we can like make it even bigger than just the road hardening, like talk to the city about going all the way out and having an entrance to the port, you know?
Yeah, no, I think there's a really good opportunity to look at the next hundred years instead of potholes, you know? Okay, I think that's about it for me.
All right, school, councillor Rask.
No report.
Fire tidy. Watershed, page twenty-two.
Yeah, page twenty-two, I I put my little report in here. And I've talked about some of these things already, but the thing that, a couple of things that are most important is that I've been talking very. I told you guys last time, we got a mini grant, uh, which allows C C D and the Coles, Oregon Land Trusts to help us get grants to do some more watershed work. And the two projects we came up with to do were getting rid of that failing culvert that's up in our reservoir and trying to get funding to dredge the reservoir when the permit comes through. And there's an opportunity to move forward on the first one coming up real soon. And so I would like to move forward with that. I was gonna, I mean, I think I'm just going to run it by David Johnson. To see if it's okay that we're applying for a grant, but it would be a, it's actually, you know, a grant to do the planning for, to remove that thing. And then we would have to go back and do another grant to do it. So anyway.
But like the FEMA grant that Brett was talking about, if you get funded to do the planning side of it or the engineering side of it, it looks really good for the next phase, so.
And and that's kind of like, we have to get into the habit of doing that and like get proactive. So the, the deadline's coming up for it quickly, but I'm, I'm, these are like some of the balls I'm going to try to keep in the air, even though we don't have John, and just like figure out how to like get it done and get it in and hopefully we can just keep those balls going.
Do you know if there's a match?
No, I don't think there is. It's, it's actually, it's very similar to the, actually, the watershed grant, the watershed loan we just did. But it's a planning one for which it's a hundred percent forgiveness.
Okay.
So some of the people that helped us with that other one would be willing to help us with this one. And it's going to be, anyway, so that's the first thing. And if we don't get that one, there's another one coming up in March that we would try again. And so, anyway, so that's one thing. I also, when Linda Tar and I went up and did a major expedition and my husband looking for the source of the sediment in that watershed. And we got up, we went up quite a ways and we found a lot of small scale erosion sources and not a massive one. So anyway, but it was good because it helps me envision what's needed for the grant and to be able to tell John and whoever we're working with what it looks like. And anyway, I'm going to keep doing those type of explorations.
Would that work with a drone at all? Is it too bushy, pretty forested?
It's pretty darn brushy and the level, the, the, we're looking at actually very. To me, what it looks like has happened in a number of places is that the water is scouring so that we have like these high rain events. uh, to me, what it looks like has happened in a number of places is that the water is scouring so that we have like these high rain events and the water comes down fast and it will just even like scour out a little area, let's say the size of that table, and then all that material falls in. And even though it's forested everywhere, somehow, I don't know if it's more intense storms, if it is the logging that happened at the very top of the watershed, why that water is coming faster now in the past couple of years, we don't know. But that's kind of what it looks like. The good news is there's a ton of wood in that stream, so it kind of already acts as check dams for quite a lot of it. But there could be more, that might be part of the solution.
Makes you wonder if we should look at the roads up there to see if they put a culvert in or a big culvert in, you know?
There is no road with the top up there.
Speaking of that, what we saw this week, last week, I think we were down four, maybe five days. Um, we were down into the teens again because of that rain event. And then we got back on and then like the next day we had a half an inch of rain over like seven hours and it shut us down again. Turned the pond completely upside down. Half an inch of rain never did that before. So now I got to thinking, I'm wondering if it's fire lines that they cut in on the Hubbard side and what they did for all that dozing work they did trying to do those fire lines, if maybe that's where this is coming from.
Oh, right, because you don't have a real, like you, they, you don't know because there was no rain during the fire event, so.
Right, but it's really changed. I mean, that half inch of rain shouldn't have turned us upside down like it did. That half inch really, it took us offline for a day.
I I will, I will look into that, the map of those uh, of those containment lines, because I was just looking at some, I don't think they were in our watershed. I think from that place where, you know, there was that little fire last summer, there is a road up there and that's where I actually want to go back in and look. Um.
Yeah, they said it jumped Hubbard Creek at some point, so that's kind of where I'm wondering.
It was a small, there was a small spot.
That fire from last summer, not this summer.
I'm talking about this summer.
Yeah.
That's what I'd be worried about.
I don't know about that.
Work off of Chana Mountain back into McGribble and stuff, but I I don't know how, I don't know, I just suspect.
I I think that that might be the other branch of Hubbard Creek, like the one that's not the North Fork, but the uh, south or whatever the other fork is, would be, I think, more where that is. But anyway.
And uh, just to ask really quick, does anyone have an issue with Ann pursuing that planning grant?
No.
Sorry, John.
Yeah, no, and the only thing I'm going to do is just run it by David Johnson, because we have had this thing before where like, oh, if you apply for one, I I'm always asking if I apply for this grant, it's not a problem for the next one or right and asking those kinds of questions, but I am totally like at the edge of my knowledge. I'm just kind of trying to.
Understood. Thank you so much. Ann is doing so much right now to support the city. I can't thank her enough. She needs a gold star or something.
I'll be happy to get some of these things done. That will be my reward.
Yeah. Uh, is that, was that it for you, Ann?
Yep.
Parks.
Parks, uh, so tonight we have the playground acquisition on here. It was a long uh, process. John was able to find how to, how to purchase this. Um, and hopefully we can approve it. Um, number two, we had a Halloween tournament, a disc golf tournament. We had ninety-one competitors show up. Uh, it broke the county record for turnout, so that was pretty cool. And then uh, we have a toy fundraiser disc golf tournament coming up December sixteenth and uh, look forward to everyone coming to the wrap up. It'll be fun. And we're going to give away the belt to the person that has the uh, lowest score. So it would be a pretty fun day, so.
That's cool, man.
It'd be cool. I'm excited. It's brought a lot of people, John. John could tell you, there's a lot of people that come that we've never seen in our city that come to our town to play disc golf. So it's it's a pretty cool thing to see that our town's really grown, even just not as many locals, but people from outside that would never have come to Port River to stop, stopped to play. So it's really neat. So, that's it, moving forward.
TLT or Main Street, whoever you want to do first.
Um, I'll jump in on Main Street. They um, been having the visitor center open. Uh, they're working on landscaping in front of Rays. It's going to be real simple, just uh, ground cloth, that gravel, it's kind of a nice looking gravel. And there'll maybe be a few low things there, but um, they're getting that done. There's five bike racks that have been installed and there's five more to go. Main Street's going to be doing the uh, Christmas light contest this year. And they'll also be doing the Hughes House Christmas teas and they'll be advertising that.
Gary, if people want to volunteer at the visitor center, who should they contact?
Kitty Million. They could contact me and I could.
They know the visitor center too. The visitor center is open. Yeah, visitor center is open every day and they usually have that contact info.
Oh, great, okay.
Are you TLT or is Tim?
Tim.
And also on that bike rack thing, is it possible to get an old bike rack at City Hall? Have I asked that before? If, yeah, like if one of them turns up, like one of those, maybe that would be a good thing.
But yeah, we didn't take any out. These were just all new.
All new, okay.
I'll I'll look forward to it for Parks.
Tim, you got anything from TLT?
Yeah, I, you know, I hate to bring it up, but right around February is when we need to be doing that. So we need some members for that. I think Steve Cordier and Lori Proudy were still members last year, but that's all we had show up. So that process usually starts right around February, so. Fair warning.
We have applicants here, didn't we? We we did get applicant ten, uh, three would.
I had asked three other people.
Advertise.
Said they would.
So yeah, we need a couple more and um, obviously I'll be available to sit in on that first meeting and help get them started and, you know, educate them on the guidelines.
So we need to advertise the heck out of that front window, post office. Uh, I think that qualifies as something we can put in the paper for free, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Facebook.
Yeah, as much as I hate to say it, yeah, I guess so.
City website.
Yeah, exactly. All right, thank you, Tim. Emergency management.
We um, I think this is the time I'm going to break this out. Um, there's a right of way between Jefferson and Dede. It's Ninth Street. The Jefferson, when it goes up, it goes up lower than Dede and so Dede takes off like this and Ninth Street goes between. And there's like a big section of property that's maybe eighty foot by a hundred that could be an emergency cash location. It'd be above the tsunami zone. It would um, be a excellent place for people to gather on that end of town and to have a couple of containers eventually.
It's pretty secluded up there too.
Where is that in relation to the the current cash? The current one's on Jeff, oh, Jackson, so you're going up one more, yep.
Up one and up one, you know, in between the two.
Got it, okay.
The one on Jackson is.
Schools.
Yeah.
But we, but we're, we've kind of taken it on into the cities. And I've done some work on it and.
That would be a great fundraiser for your uh, thing too, if you're ever looking for one, you know, I know um, just the stuff that needs to be replaced. We, I did it and it was great. It felt great to, just just throwing it out there in case you ever, you guys are doing such great work at the parks.
So technically, wouldn't we want you to come back with like a one pager of what you want to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, I ended up doing that. John thought I should just present it at the council.
So ironic.
I'm sure we could find a grant for emergency supplies. I guarantee you we can.
Yeah, we've had.
Good with word of mouth on this?
Yep.
Pursue?
Yeah.
Say again, what was it?
Well, are you asking, you're asking right now to clear that property and put the container on it?
Oh. So.
And and to declare that as.
Is it a right of way?
Come back with a right of way then, right?
Is it a right of way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's got us to go after planning.
Oh, there you go. That's like regardless of what was said before, as far as doing a report, it is a right of way. So if you do a right of way permit, then that should cover it.
Yes, that's right. As a right of way permit as like the emergency management.
No, no, like a right of way permit, like we're going to be doing something on the right of way, so get the check out from Hank and John and everybody and then present it to us.
But who's submitting it is the emergency manager.
Right, sorry.
That's.
Okay.
Just to make it more cumbersome for you.
Well, then we can bring it back in.
Is everybody good with that process?
Then we can decide.
Yeah, is everybody good with the process we're supposed to?
Tough luck if you're not.
There aren't many spots like that in town where it's actually a usable piece. It's not in a watershed.
So it's, 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 it's Jefferson and Dede on, it's north side of them.
How steep, it's not on the.
South's end of town.
Not on the steep part, because part of it's got to be really steep.
Okay, got it.
What's that?
Part of it's got to be really steep, so it's a flat part of it?
Um, the Jefferson, where it takes off from Jefferson.
Oh, it's ninth.
It's low there. I mean, it's even with uh, Jeff, there's a catamaran.
Yeah, yeah, that's nice. Okay, I know where you're at now.
And um, it's not too far up, you know, if we, I don't think we can send people up Dede Street, it's just too steep.
I like that it's secluded though too, in the sense that people that live on that street, you know, such would monitor if anything.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, I like the Jackson location because where it is, but there's really no neighbor directly, you know, across from it.
Broken into.
It got broken into, so that's what I'm saying. I liked where the Jefferson was, if this is the city's cache or something like that, it's for us, you know?
Yeah, the schools should have their own, they really should, uh, you know.
But that's what I'm saying, we'll move out from there and the school can buzz theirs up and we'll have a.
I ended up getting a um, a box um, that bolt bolted on, there's one elk park goes onto one door.
Covers a log or whatever.
Another, and then the, it's a rectangle lock that goes up.
Yeah.
In and in and, man, you gotta.
Terrible. Yeah. Good.
No security.
Yeah, if need be, who are we going to get into it?
Unkey for this, what's going on?
Tsunami ripped the key out of my hands.
Okay, neighbor to neighbor, Perry, we did have a report from uh, Ms. Bailey earlier, but if you have anything to add.
I do not. I was out of town for their meeting, so yeah, I don't have anything to add.
I think we need to change the name of that. I think you brought that up, Perry, last time, that it's not really any longer end to end. It's kind of like the homeless committee, right?
Yeah.
I think, Gary, did you bring up that you weren't, that name?
Um, I did not bring it up, no, that I recall. Um, but, oh, what I brought up was, oh, I can't remember. Um, but it's not a formal committee, but we can certainly call it a committee.
Concerned citizens. Okay, thank you, Perry. Uh, got nothing on old business, so eight A changes in court fees.
I make a motion to uh, revise the Porterford court fees as stated in this memo.
Jonathan, real quick.
I want to add them to the master list.
Okay, so we got first and a second.
Um, I would request a small amendment to what was in the packet today. I just got the rest of my notary stuff, so in addition to the proposed changes that are in front of you, uh, we could put notary services and charge ten dollars.
Oh, that's great. Congratulations.
What, so?
So you would provide.
Resign the second or do you just want to say so moved?
You're going to amend your motion to.
I will amend my motion to include adding notary services for ten dollars.
Can I get you to resecond there, Perry?
Second.
Killer, awesome.
Any discussion on that?
Good job getting your notary.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call for the question. Tim? Counselor.
Timmy.
Counselor Perry Rask.
Yes.
Is that a yes to the vote or a yeah? Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Tiger. Counselor Burns.
Burns, yes.
Counselor Velisus.
Yes.
And Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay, resolution, well, new business B, resolution twenty twenty-three dash three-two, PlayCraft acquisition, page twenty-four.
Now, I was wondering, um, I lived in a little community and we bought a big playground piece and we um, saved a lot of money by having the community have, we took a weekend and we hired them to have, I think they had, they had two or three kind of supervisors. And they broke us all into groups and one group ended up putting this piece together and one, and then they all started and they knew how to do it and I don't, I, I saw that the uh, cost of.
Prevailing wage and that's the install.
Seventies.
But it's also because of the way this was funded though too, that's something that John had brought up, that it needed to be a prevailing wage way this was funded. But it can't be due to their insurances or anything else with, uh, not the insurances, the warranty install. If it wasn't professionally installed with their contractors and they're out of Grants Pass. It's not like this is a foreign company. That's why we got some of the discounts too. Is because we were a local company, so, or local city.
Is it because of the fundraiser nature of it? I mean, it's not like this is grant money.
Uh, John, former former city minister Huddle, had said that the way that the money was that needed to be underneath prevailing wage, there was two different, two different ways to require this. And the prevailing wage was the way that it had to be done.
I think it was because there was something about how you don't have to go out to bid on this because it's a company that's already been like pre-approved through something or other. That's, maybe that's what it was about.
What do you mean by we don't have to go out to bid?
So because there's, we, for installs and everything else for this companies, um, we've actually went out and asked them and they didn't come and give us, uh, as the Parks Commission, we went out and requested, you know, bids and we didn't get any besides them here locally.
Okay, but you did go.
Yes, the Parks Commission already did that. That's, that's why we went with with PlayCraft because they actually were the only ones that came back to us with with bids.
See, seventeen thousand dollar price bothers me because I can't, like, this is general fund money, so the only angle that it could be, I mean, it's Parks money.
Seventy-one thousand? What's the seventeen thousand?
For the, oh, seventy-one?
For install? Install seventy-one thousand.
Let me know and I go. I was like thinking seventeen thousand.
But it wasn't that though, it was, I don't know, it was.
And I'm not trying to be argumentative and and John knows more than me, but it's not grant money. It's not federal grant money, so I have a hard time wrapping my head around why it would have to be prevailing wage.
Um, I, so our policies that, what do, have we adopted the state procurement policies? Is that what we use? Because we don't have our own?
That's what this is. We follow the ORS.
We'll see, I just want to be sure that we're doing that right, you know what I mean? If we don't have our own policy, then we we automatically operate under.
This was a Department of Administrative Services that we, that's why John went this route because it was such a complex.
Yeah.
Buy that the city has not done recently in a lot of years, I guess. When he tried to look at this, look up how to buy this. That's why he researched it this way and right before he resigned, this was one of his last things that he actually tried to push through just because he knew that it was right there for us to finally get done. And we actually, uh, if you look, it was the fifth, it was the last quote, we, it went up uh, on October, on November first, the wages went, everything went up, I think like eight thousand dollars. If we could have got this done earlier in the year, you know what I mean, we would have saved a little bit of money, but it didn't happen that way.
And so this is um.
So there's no way to have volunteers helping?
The way it was told to us from the company when we got our, our stuff to the Parks Committee, that that's, was part of their thing, was they do install only.
And I could see that, we're not going to honor the warranty.
Yeah.
We're, like, I can't see it from the money angle, but I can't see it from the company saying we're not going to do it.
And these guys are in and out in usually two to three days.
See, if you look at the resolution, it says PlayCraft is authorized for cooperative procurement on the state of Oregon, Oregon purchasing agreements. So that's how we're doing it. If you look at the resolution, this is where John did the research to say PlayCraft is authorized for cooperative procurement.
So this is, looks like a fabulous piece of product, of projects. Explain to me the money part of it. Where it's coming.
This was the parks, we had this budgeted in and this was pretty much our big purchase for the parks that hasn't been purchased for about eleven years. We haven't purchased anything major in parks and.
That money's.
Nineteen ninety-seven, this was all contingency money and during the budget cycle, the Parks Committee, when we do, you know, what would you like to spend money on, the. The Parks Committee came up that our major need in this town was a brand new playground, the last playground was nineteen ninety-three was installed. And it literally is a disrepair, John will tell you that he's had to remove a lot of things due to rust and everything else deterioration. And frankly, it's, it's a hazard to our town right now, you know, especially for our kids, and that's who we're supposed to be really looking out for ourselves.
Saw the removal of the portion of the roof at the community building, whoever did that, thank you.
Okay, we're working on that.
Okay, and so then, do you have half the money, Greg, is that what you have?
No, this was, uh, the contingency money, we, after, we raised, I think, twenties, eight thousand dollars for the playground fundraiser stuff. And then in parks contingency money, we had a little over two hundred thousand dollars, and David Johnson went with the budget and everything else, combined our parks fundraiser money in with our, not our contingency, but our, your excess money in the parks line item. And that's how we made it for this budget, so, it's just something that the money, we had not been spending any money in the parks department for a while. And it was, this is, uh, we, yeah.
Is there a picture of it?
Excuse me?
I guess I didn't see, I wanna see a picture of the thing.
Oh, we, geez.
How come I don't get a picture for a hundred and eighty thousand?
I wanna know how I can get a job where I make seventy grand in three days, but playground.
I, I, I couldn't answer that question, but, uh, I, but you know, there's twelve thousand dollars in new wood fiber that has to be ADA compliant. That's the other part of all this, is all ADA compliancy and everything else, too, we gotta.
So they're doing demo and removal?
They're doing everything, this is full, everything, uh.
Except it says there is not site preparation, did you read that?
Right.
So that's, I don't know who's gonna do the site, John, he's gonna do the site preparation.
That's why I'm asking.
No, we'll see, that's something, are you talking about right there, that quote is for complete install contractor, provides all tools.
No, when I was reading through the, through the contract, it says that the, that they do no site preparation, that's like on us, I don't remember where it is, but that's where it says.
Pretty sure that remains removal of the old structure, digging out all the concrete.
Uh, is this on the front page you're talking about? The front page says, the customer is responsible for removal of all debris during install, which will be bagged nicely, excavation to be done by others.
And it, we also need to, I, I mean, it says you're supposed to put, you know, have the surface that's a soft surface, which I guess we'll keep doing sand, right? Is that what we have?
No, it's, it's pea gravel, the, this, this wood engineered fiber that they're putting, that twelve thousand dollars, that's, that's the whole resurfacing.
Okay, but I mean, we're supposed to have some soft surface that they can install, we're, for the site preparation, I think, uh, there was I mean, I assume you guys are paying attention to these details.
Is it going right where the, where the?
It's going the exact same hundred by fifty.
So it's pretty prepped anyways.
It is, it is. When, when we came out for the entire, because they came out and did a whole thing with us.
Yeah.
And I, the way they made it sound was that was all included, that's the reason why it was that way. Also, like the spray and foam stuff, it was almost two hundred thousand dollars for the spray and foam padding. Instead of this engineered fiber, it would've been more for the padding than it would've been for the entire structure, we tried to look into it, and it was incredibly insane.
It's cool stuff, but it's really expensive to maintain.
Yep.
What is an engineered fiber, is that chips or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chips.
Mulch, yeah.
Wood mulch.
Man, that's a fancy word for it.
Wish this, I wish this resolution had an amount on it.
I, I'd like to just say a few words about the budgetary aspect of this, or do we wanna, we haven't really made a motion yet, or do we wanna just continue the conversation?
I got away from the three minutes, but here's your three minutes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um, I wanna say just because of paying attention to the need to hire a new administrator and a new finance director and a new attorney, the price tag of this gives me like a major heartburn. Um, and so I did look into that, talking to David about it, and just because I'm, I'm worried about it, not that I don't wanna do this. Um, he mentioned to me that there's ninety-five thousand dollars that got moved into the parks budget from the general fund, and that, um, he's not really sure why that happened. But that, there still is enough money in the parks fund to buy this, and that made me feel a lot better. Because I think we may need to claw back some of that general fund money that got shifted into parks. I think we may need to move, use some of that money for these other purposes as we're moving forward, and, um, anyway, that made me feel better about moving forward with this, because this, the money in parks has to be used for parks. Except for that ninety-five thousand that's from the general fund, and, um, anyway.
The ninety-five's not in this.
David said that this could happen without tapping that ninety-five. And we may need to, when we do the supplemental budget, we may need to take some of that money back out of parks, so I just wanna say that, Greg, not because of, just because I'm thinking you know, I'm, I'm still.
No, you're great.
When we were working on the budget, when we did this way back when, I'm still learning all this stuff, and so, I'm, you know, just getting a, the more of a grip I get, the more I'm like, oh my god, we gotta be careful.
I wanna say that two years ago, we slid ninety-five thousand over for the playground equipment before it developed.
This, this was the recent thing with David, David did, when he, when we did the whole budget thing, it was the twenty, he took some out of our contingency, took like more than half out of our contingency, and then he met it, I guess, with, or met something with the general fund plus the twenty-eight thousand, and that's where he got this hundred and sixty-three. The other part that I sort of see is we have, in our financial report, we have a hundred and sixty-three thousand, and this is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So that's sixteen thousand dollar difference, that was that difference by not doing this, by doing this late, that was a big price increase that they told us about, and we tried to reiterate that to John, and it's just taking time, so we we even spent even more money because it just was longer to acquire this.
And, and the other piece I just wanted to throw out there too, is that, you know, doing all this grant research I've been doing, there are those parks grants, and so I, I mean, moving forward, I think we could get a grant for half of this kinda money, you know, we could get a grant for seventy-five thousand, and then it's.
Well, you leverage this against a million dollars is what you do.
Do we?
Yeah.
And I put a park all the way.
Do you wanna table this until we can research more?
Well, I, I wonder about it, I'm, I'm willing to move forward with this, because I know you guys have been working on it a long time, and I but I'm just telling you these things that I've learned and I've thought about it.
I totally appreciate it too, and I, I'd rather, I mean, if we can save the money, we can, you know, but we've never we've just never been, have that option here, you know what I mean, before, we've.
It's just think.
I, we, we actually clawed, this is the only thing I can think of honestly from the Parks Department and all the Parks Committee, this is like the one thing that's dire in this town is that playground, it's horrendous, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I'm.
Nowhere to go hang out, and, and it's really bad.
The reason I'm putting these things out is just because I'm, I feel like we do have to have a conversation about financial due diligence, and that moving forward, at least to me, we have these other options, and that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna need to avail ourselves of them, or if there are other things that we need to do in parks, I would like to see us and I know you've been bringing this up, we gotta get a grant, with these, there's the grant money is there, why don't we work, use it, you know?
Was it the gentleman from Kokil that you talked to about that?
Public Works Supervisor.
Yeah.
I think.
That's, I mean, like Brad just said.
It was a half a million dollars for the Oregon State Lottery.
Right, and a hundred and ninety, a hundred and seventy thousand might be our match.
If we got, if we got that, we would, we wouldn't even have this playground, and we'd have a mega one, this was in our budget, you know what I mean, this was in our budget. We could've went crazy and spent, you know, half a million bucks, and had the playground on the entire coast.
We, we, we generally get about a, a eighty percent, um, grant when we.
This, the grant from, the grant from that I'm talking about is a no match, up to a half a million dollars, uh, maximum. So it's, 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 it's completely doable, it's Oregon State Lottery funds for the Oregon Parks Department.
That's true.
And I, I looked up the deadline for that grant, I don't know, I forget when it was, I was looking at that. Was it recent, I was gonna say, I think there was one in, coming up.
Past.
Yeah, but that's, well, we can table this, and then if, we don't find anything, I'll do research this month. If I don't find anything on grants that we think we can bump this or use any other money, then.
It's just huge, it's just, it turns from a, it, it turns from two hundred thousand to a million dollars, you know what I mean, it's just crazy, what, what's up? Maybe, maybe not, you know, I don't know.
I'm, I'm down to tabling it, it's, it's now we have this in front of us, so we know what it is, if I can table it, and this, because, I mean, now a month is gonna kill me on this.
Well, you know what else, Greg, is you might find.
Here, you know what I mean?
Because you have this.
Happened regardless.
Because you have this shovel-ready plan.
This is it.
You might go in and they might give you eighty percent of this, and, and then you pay twenty thousand dollars, you know, or forty thousand. Yeah, so, so there may be a grant that's just ending, like, man, there's only seven days left, we gotta, we still got, and they want a grant, those granting agencies, they want that money so that they get it next time.
I'm down with table, I can there.
I have the specific information about that grant, because I was, I've been looking through these grants, and I could, we could look at it together and, and figure it out. And if it is like a matter of doing it in January and then getting it in, I mean, that's what I wanna, I would, you know, is that okay, you don't think?
Something happens here on.
If we can save the city money, and save like the taxidermist money, and even probably get a better thing, I'm all down for it, I think the commissioners will be too. The commi, yeah, it can go to other things, it can go towards the lights, you know, for playground, it can go for everything else that we could be doing there. You know, bathroom upgrades, that we only have about one bathroom, you know, there's tons of stuff.
Dogport Park on the coast at Battle Rock Park.
Yes, well, next to the disco, of course.
There's something.
You should talk to our senator too, because he is now on the Internal Finance Authority.
Good call, uh, yeah, so if we, I'm down mayor for tabling this purchase, uh, till next, yes.
Can I get a second?
So it's gonna be a move to.
Because we never made a motion, right?
No motion, able to.
Table it till next month.
Second.
Does it hold over till next month if you don't?
It's the different.
Continue it till next month.
Continue.
Yeah, continue it.
I'm sorry, rescind.
You don't have to rescind.
Yeah, I'll second the, I'll second the motion to, to, uh.
Okay, guys, thank you.
Uh, what was that word we did?
So the motion was to continue this conversation next month.
That's the second, that's my second.
And second by Webb, any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, Counselor Pogwidd.
Him, yes.
Counselor Rask.
Perry, yes.
Counsel Burns?
Burns, yes.
Counselor Tyty?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
And Counselor Valisis.
Yes.
Thanks for your patience on that.
No, that's great.
This is great, man, I'm stoked about this.
Moving forward.
I love shutting down playgrounds, it makes me feel good. All right, uh, eight C, Planning Director Designation. Basically, this is, the Pro Tem took over planning, uh, for a while to save us some money, and this would be putting it back to Crystal, so we can keep moving.
It's in the budget, right?
Yeah, yeah, it is in the budget, we had actually agreed to a contract before, so we're just reiterating it.
I do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to designate Crystal Soji as our City Planning Director.
Second.
Any discussion on that? How do I get so mixed up so fast?
No.
Did you take my page two?
What, uh?
I'm just kidding.
So, we, we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yep.
I wrote those down.
Oh, some official wording.
No, I think Pat just has to ask us.
Oh, I thought it was, what's he doing? We gotta vote here, we got most.
We're good to go, no discussion, all right, I will call for the Planning Director Designation, Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counsel Burns?
Burns, yes.
Counsel Tyty?
Yes.
Counsel Valisis?
Yes.
Counsel Rask?
Yes.
And Counsel Pogwidd.
Him, yes.
I found my second page, sorry about the lull there, I was looking for my second page. Okay, eight D, Pro Tem City Admin Discussion. Uh, me and Ann have been shaking the tree, Ann and I have been shaking the trees on that, thank you, Counselor Webb.
Grammar police.
No, I, I got lucky.
Uh, so this is kind of a can of worms, we do have a few candidates, um, Ann has been shaking the tree, or bird dogging, as she would say, on this one, so, um, lay it on us, Ann.
Okay, yeah, so we got, um, in the, in, uh, uh, the former Pro Tem uh, resignation letter, we got a recommendation that possibly there would be a person, the former administrator from Banden might be interested. I've talked to a number of people just to try to network, including Gary Milliman, the League of Oregon Cities, to ask people who might be available, what's available, I've got a list of some candidates, um, but we haven't reached out to them yet to to see if people would be available to work interim. Um, some of the things from talking to Gary Milliman that I learned are, you know, that of course, if we go farther away, some of the people that are on the list that may be available, that we might have to, um, provide them with housing, and how are we gonna do that, and stuff like that, so um, we have some leads, um, for people to contact, and I guess, I think it would be good for us to move forward with that. One of the people that's on the list is not gonna be back for, and that's the person from Banden until, I think, next week or something, so we've taken some time to just, um, understand what the options might be, so instead of just having one person, we might be able to have a few options. So I think we need to, for this discussion, and it's kind of a good prelude for the next discussion, is figure out, you know, do we wanna have a committee to do this? Um, do we wanna have, yeah, subset of us that can work on this, I mean, I've started to do the groundwork and can continue to make a few phone calls. Um, but, we're gonna need, I think, a subgroup of us, unless we wanna all be meeting all the time, in which case then we need to do public notices and all that, so it would probably be more efficient for a subgroup of us to do it, and then bring back a few candidates to, uh, if we even get a few, we may get, last time we did this, we get, really only got one, so.
Would we wanna include, uh, any citizens?
I think for the interim, maybe, I don't know if we need that, because I, I think we're gonna have a very few possible abilities, because at this point, really, I have like under, I thought, like, maybe four, I don't even know if they're available, we may but definitely, I think, for the actual one.
It might be faster to, for me or you or us to contact and get candidates, and then just do uh, a hiring committee, like, I know that's how we work usually, and then it would save a lot of those meetings, it would just be you know, and then we could use some staff, and, and we usually have a citizen member, if that works for everybody. Or, but, we could do a committee and do the whole process as well.
This is a Pro Tem position?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the interim.
Fine to not have the entire ch, ch, you know what I mean, for the Pro Tem.
And one of the things that Pat and I were talking about with this job is, I mean, the interim person has to keep things moving, but really their biggest job is gonna be to hire the next person. And, you know, what we did last time is, we kinda got, I think, just complacent, because things you know, we had a lot of things going, and it's hard to, um, move forward with all of these job description stuff, and I think this time we have to just really front load it and say, this is your number one job, is to hire the administrator in the next three months, you know?
Hire your replacement.
Yeah.
So that we're not, you know, otherwise.
Eligible to apply to.
Yeah.
Very much so, yep, that's true.
And we did pretty good last night, I mean, Gary brought four candidates to us, and we tried, but, uh, right, so is that, so does that sound okay with us, me and Ann, to shake the trees, find some candidates, and, and then we'll form a a hiring committee that we can run by that committee, we'll come back with a, with a list of people that are willing to do it, and then you guys can okay if that's a good committee or not. Because really, I think it's usually just the administrator pulls a counselor or two, and, and Hank, or.
Yeah.
So, the Pro Tem, we, we wanna get this going as quickly as possible, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we wanna streamline the process as.
Right.
Possible, so, are you thinking of asking the four people, and then setting up appointments, interview?
We're, I think we will see who's available, and we may get four people, we may get two people, you know, I don't know how many we're gonna get, um, I should. Yes, I think we can, and actually, Gary Milliman already put it out on a big list serve, and, but we don't have an actual job thing out, so I think, right now, we could, um, you know, come up with the ad, we have to come up with the copy and post it, and then we also, I think, shake the trees in this informal way, where you know, I've asked Gary through his network, he like knows everybody, I just went to the city meeting today and talked to a bunch of people um, of the, a League of Oregon Cities meeting, so I think.
Oh, the one in Banden?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
So, I think that the networking, at least for the interim position. So I think that the networking, at least for the interim position, is probably a good way to go.
So, why, I mean, but when we advertise, we're going to be at, why, why would we not advertise for the full-time position? Like right off the bat?
Yeah, I think we could do, I mean, I was thinking not so much advertising for the interim, but just posting it.
Right.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
But I guess that's what I like. Do, we'll do both at the same time though. Like hopefully we'll get through this next portion of the city administrator conversation and we can put.
Yeah, what, if the person wants to be full-time employment, do we have to hire them on Pro Tem? Uh, that's what. On that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you have to be Pro Tem.
Everyone's got to be pro temporary for a city admin. We didn't do that with previous administrations.
So everybody's Pro Tem for six months.
So the Pro Tem part is been, in my experience and Lord knows, anything could happen. But in my experience, the Pro Tem was like somebody you just grabbed him, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
First job was.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, like, uh, in this previous two city admins before Gary Milliman or before Gary Milliman, she was never Pro Tem. It just always says such and such. You know, that's what I'm trying to get at. You know, do we have to, this next person, if they say, hey, I'd like to make this full-time job, we don't have to hire them.
They would set to apply.
They would have to apply. Either, either way, they have to apply.
We would still have to do the hiring process.
Gotcha. That's what I'm just trying to get at, is it?
But that's kind of.
Pro Tem, can we just have you appoint someone?
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole point of the Pro Tem is.
To get it.
We don't have time to do all this procurement. We need somebody that's not Pat doing this stuff.
Actually, and if you look at.
No, that's what I want, that's what I wanted to, I didn't understand that part.
If you look at this guide, which we're going to talk to, talk about perhaps about recruiting a city administrator, the first steps are, you know, you need somebody Pro Tem and you just, so that's kind of a good guidance. And basically Pat is being the Pro Tem guy right now and I'm trying to help him. And, but, but he's the guy, right, who makes the decisions right in this pinch hitting moment and, um, and we can, how long do you think he can handle that? So, you know, there's a lot of things that, as I was saying earlier, we're going to try to keep the balls rolling on, but it's, there's a lot that the administrator does. Unfortunately, staff is rising up to the occasion, our administrative staff, people are pitching in and helping out, Joseph and Keely and Dina and David Johnson and, um, I mean, so people are pitching in, but.
That's, that's a thought that went across my head was trying to twist David Johnson's arm to come in. I mean, he did it for a year.
It's him again.
Davey on there?
I think we get this guy trained up to be the next David Johnson.
There you go.
This guy right here. He's got more training than David did when he started training him. There's your half a, half a man too.
Okay, so.
So do we need a consensus on that? That Pat will just, um, make the appointment for the Pro Tem admin?
I think that's, that's already part of what would happen for Pro Tem.
Okay.
It's a needed thing. It's an opening.
What do you got going on, Dave? Gotta quit putting my leg behind me.
Oh, man.
Okay, so that answers that. Good deal. That was going to be fun. So we're going on to continuing action. I, uh, we're not, we're not. We are going on to, uh, item eight D, the application discussion for the, uh, emergency management. When we left off, we were kind of thinking that advertising that more robustly might be a good way to go. Uh, like I said, we are going to have a meeting on December 5th. So other than that Thanksgiving meeting, it shouldn't, I mean, it will, like, we won't be obviously going if we don't do it tonight, but I think by the next meeting, you'll have plenty of time to have.
We had an informal meeting the other night.
Gotcha.
Like we have been.
Perfect. So you could kind of do that.
And, and then there was one other aspect that could, um, we need to discuss, I think, is, um, we, when we met the other night, we thought that it would be good if we had a law enforcement person as part of the committee because it's, it just makes sense.
Right.
And, um, so Officer Perry has, um, volunteered to do that. And so I didn't know if we.
Well, have we?
How we would do that.
That's awesome, Arnie.
Yes, but can we have employees on committees is my only question.
That's, um, so are we adhering to the?
Yes, even if we weren't, we are adhering to policy.
So was there a policy change made to that?
You were here when we did? Were you here when we did that? Ordinance, um, for the emergency.
Tim was, I bet.
Oh, man, that was a nightmare. Um. It's not supposed to be city employees or spouses, uh, EF, what's the, how you say, the direct family, first, uh, immediate, there you go. So that's what it was. It was supposed to, um, that it forbode those.
I, I didn't hear, I didn't get that.
Uh, the, the ordinance that was written in 2016, was that one, well, I think 2016, was, um, one that forbade any spouses, uh, immediate family of counselors, any elected or city employees.
It was the elected part of that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it was, it was really, it was really bad. I, I dug into them. I have a little file that, that was a really hot period of time. And, um, I listened to the audio of the planning commission. And if you, you will, I was just amazed. I was just amazed that, that. You'd like to think that, so, so what happens is you, if they serve at your pleasure, they serve at our pleasure. Anyone that we appoint to a commission that mayor appoints that we confirm, they serve at our pleasure and we can dismiss them anytime we want. The problem is, is that in a small town and this and that, you know, how do you dismiss these two dudes? You know, or do you just abandon the whole thing or what you do? So that was actually, um, that was a compromise that was made. I was actually trying to, uh, just make it to where we removed a couple of individuals that were the problem on, on the thing and, but, uh, I didn't quite have the horsepower to get it done. The, the voter that, that killed it said, here's what we're going to do. And it was Jim Billings and he said, here's how we do it. Um, meanwhile, he was on the far decision, you know, so it, it's just weird.
And that's why I, first part of me, I thought that it landed on just planning. You couldn't.
So I think.
That might have morphed over the years too.
The just planning thing is, I think, just, I mean, that's common sense. I, I think that's just common sense because you have quasi judicial responsibilities of us from time to time that would make it very difficult for, uh, for a husband and wife or something to have a, a dinner and, and not talk about a hot, uh, topic coming up at planning, which would, could potentially, put you in the crosshairs of, of some kind of a lawsuit or, or whatever, because, you know, whatever. But anyway.
But we do have a clear path forward because that's like, if, if, if this did get pushed back to the fifth, that gives us time to look at that ordinance and clarify everything. I'm not saying you're wrong, but.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I, if we, if we're going to make decisions that, that are, are, are under the jurisdiction of an ordinance.
No, that's what I'm saying. Like, I really would like to.
I'd like to be sure that we are doing things.
I, I would say that another possibility here, because what I'm under, we're talking about, we're talking about the Emergency Management Committee and the idea of the law enforcement officer being on it, is that there may be actually the case where we don't want to appoint the law enforcement officer to be a voting member of the committee, but to be there to actually provide knowledge and.
Non-voting member.
Uh, yeah, non-voting member, serving, and, and this is something, I don't know, um, but that would get away from the voting issue and would give the committee the opportunity to tap the knowledge of the law enforcement officer. And I don't know if this is like, uh, like, if you're perceiving this as like, this is a volunteer where, um, you know, where Officer Perry is volunteering as a citizen? Or if it's like part of his work that he's going to contribute to his knowledge as a law enforcement officer on the basis of the city? And those are two different things.
Hugely, hugely different.
But I feel, I, I feel comfortable with the idea of the, the first thing, i- if that, if that's something.
Liaison to law enforcement or?
Yeah. It, it, you know, if that's something that, especially if, I don't know if we have, you know, if the chief, chief needs to be part of it, you know.
I like, I like the idea of the non, I mean, you know, it's, it's, you get it done right now. A non-voting member, that makes sense. I mean.
Okay, so we would have to wait on that decision. Are we, do, do you guys want to wait till the fifth for all of the rest of this discussion and verify the ordinance?
You're talking about just from planning the, the?
I'm just talking for the Emergency Management applications. Yeah, and then I'll go back to the planning and.
Planning. Okay, just making sure.
So we have created a new, it's a new commission, right?
It's a new commission.
It's a new commission. So does it fall within? Because we haven't specified. So actually, right now, it may not be governed by that.
Well, it has, it's been established.
Reason we were holding off too is for the, so we made sure and advertised correctly.
Okay, okay.
That was the motivator of.
But I think the ordinance would. I read the ordinance just the other day. I, I did, um.
It was the last packet. It's in the minutes, right? Maybe, or what?
I have it. I can read it to you. If you just give me one minute, I can come up with it. I would just, um.
Just, I think I already did it, but we do have to, I do, I will make a motion to take a, to extend the meeting, but to take a break and then extend the meeting.
Everybody's got to come.
Okay, that's, um.
I need a second on that.
A second, Matt.
Any discussion? I will say before, uh, the vote, that I want you all to consider the fact that we have an executive session scheduled.
Yes.
So I don't know how to get around that. If we stop the meeting, well, I guess we could stop the meeting and then open the executive session. So we're okay. I'll go for the vote. Counselor Tidy, would you like to continue?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Velisis?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, no.
I knew it. Thought this was going to be the one. Counselor Pogwitsch?
Yes, Tim, yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Okay, you didn't specify the break time, so we'll go with seven and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you.
That's unilateral. I'm not sure I.
I made the appointment, Brett.
Hi sweetheart.
Ready to go again. We adjourned this meeting. We were, we were still in the middle of the application discussion, weren't we? So can I get, entertain a motion to table the emergency management discussion until the December 5th meeting?
Continue it.
Continue?
Continue. Sorry.
Did I say table?
You did. But it's.
So move.
Been something that's.
Second.
Second.
So Burns with the?
Motion.
Motion and Tidy with the second, yeah. Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing none. Counselor Velisus?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Burns?
Burns, yes.
Counselor Tidy?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwidds?
Tim, yes.
And Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Okay, and so the other application, that's for TLT, Annie Stevens. Seen that application. So.
I'll move to, move to appoint Annie Stevens.
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Webb? Counselor Tidy?
Yes.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Rask?
Sorry, who? Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Thank you. Pogwidds?
Tim, yes.
And Velisus. Okay, so the next discussion would be on the application for appointment to Planning Commission for Susan Russell.
Is this what Brett was referring to earlier about?
The NEP, yeah.
Just making sure.
So resolution.
Check.
So resolution two zero one six dash zero three titled Policy on Spousal, Spousal Appointments. Whereas there has been concern when spouses of volunteers hold public office by election, appointment, or employment to the city, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Poroford hereby declares the following. It is the policy of the city of Poroford not to appoint spouses or city employees, the mayor, or city councillors to positions on official committees or commissions of the city. Adopted this seventeenth day of September two thousand fifteen.
So that's all of them?
Yeah, I mean, even I'm.
Yeah, that would include this.
Yeah, exactly. So that's any committee.
Well, and that's we, like, because.
I remember these, I remember these meetings.
Got appointed to the Historical Committee, and that's where I thought that it was only planning, but that's in black and white and says it, so I can kick her off. Do I need to unappoint people too?
So hey, when I, so I was elected and my partner at the time, fabulous, fabulous lady, she was on Parks Commission, and she resigned at the, at my first meeting. And she came in and she read of the council that she believed there could potentially be conflict. And we tried to set an example and just absolutely went nowhere with, with the example setting. And, and because things were goofy at that time, and maybe, maybe it's not needed at this point in time. I don't know. But that's what it says.
I remember sitting in the, in the audience for those meetings. It was a very contentious time.
Oh, yeah, you were around.
Oh, yeah, I was around.
Yeah. Oh, I don't know.
You were running the sea of water at the time. You were not around.
No, it was.
So that kind of answers that, but I, I gotta get Maurice off the committee now, because that's black and white. There was a mistake before. Is it, I don't, is it historical committee, is it?
It's not an official committee.
You know, it, it is, it is an official committee because it actually has, it has all this language. You remember two years ago, you guys took it out of the Planning Commission and gave it its own language? And it has all sorts of language. Somehow John Huddle never quite, there, there were some things about it, but I don't think we fully appointed everybody that's on it. So they're, they're functioning, but it's not, you know, maybe as official as it should be. But I think, they think they're official. They need to get their stuff on our website. There's all sorts of things that they're doing and need to do.
Okay.
So.
Well, there'll be an opening.
I'll kick Maurice off tonight.
You can tell her we thought she was doing a really bad job.
You don't have to do it.
Yeah.
I don't think you need to do anything. You know what I mean?
She'd just say no anyway.
Just, just quit inviting her.
It sort of makes it difficult because it takes a pool of people away from volunteering.
It does.
Right. And it's, and a lot of times.
Absolutely.
It, it's the, you know, like, the people pair up and they want, and they're like-minded, so.
Well, what about the whole non-voting thing? I mean, like, you're, I mean, in Maurice's case, she actually has, like, you know, schooling and training and historic preservation. It's a total passion to her.
That's a good, yeah, that's.
Huge amount of knowledge, but maybe if she's not a voting member, she could participate as a volunteer. I mean, it's not like, I don't know.
Right. Or I can break up with her.
She may break up.
Define spouse.
Yeah, no, that's the other angle.
It does not have any definitions.
Oh, right. Susan and I aren't married.
That's, I know. That's what I was thinking about, too.
Yeah. I, in this case, I mean, obviously, Susan is would be a fabulous volunteer, and so it's absolutely would not be a personal thing. It's just more, and in this case, I, like you were saying, I don't really think maybe it's anything funky or funny. But we do know, I remember in the past, we've had it with different council members and their spouses. And so sometimes you have to pick the poli, you have to stick with the policy, not for the easy times, but for anticipating there could be rocky times and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Makes sense.
And what, 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 what can happen really easily is, is you have a commission of appointed folks, and then a new composition is elected to council, and that composition might have a different vision. And the commissions still are functioning under the prior vision, and their spouse may be the minority on the council, but they may enjoy a majority on a commission. And that's when things get really ugly. It's, it's amazing how you wouldn't believe the things I've heard by ears.
And you know, the definition of spouse is a husband or wife considered in relation to their partner. Communication is key to understanding your spouse partner or significant other. I don't know why that's in the definition. It's a good, good pointer. So, I mean, technically, black and white.
Tens of.
It'd be okay. Gut feeling, I'm not sure. The correspondence I've had about it, I know will get more.
The, the planning thing, the planning one's tough because of the quasi judicial role that we, that we play. So it's, that one's really especially tough.
I would love to have Ms. Russell and her expertise, you know, with, with her construction background and everything else. I think it'd be very viable. I just don't want to go against, especially not having legal counsel here tonight. I, I'd rather.
You know.
Shayla, she thinks on this, you know what I mean?
So planning can, planning can have expert witnesses for every single thing. I mean, they can have testimony every single time from, from Susan on things. So it's not like she's deprived of, of, or that, that the commission is deprived of her input. It, it'd be a bummer for her. I could imagine that would be kind of crummy. You know what I mean? I get it. I had to talk mine into Quitton Parks and she was stoked. You know what I mean? So I've been there. I've been there.
Well, that's what we got on the table right now, is technically, it would be okay. Ethic, I mean, I mean, just gut wise, because it's planning, it, there would be blowback.
It doesn't really pass the red face test, I don't think.
That's, yeah.
But. You know.
Unfortunately for me, it would be.
It could, I don't know how you even change that. I mean, it would be neat if we had, like, if we, what if we had, what if it said, I like the non-voting little loophole that you, you know, that you introduced there.
But then they're not really.
But they are.
No commitment to the.
You, you, they can still, the, the amount of influence that they can put on the, you know, you can really, you can put a lot of influence on some, it's like, just, for example, the mayor, just his, his power to create the agenda. And his guest speakers, you know, there may be, this guy wants to build a tower. Let's say this guy wants to build a tower right there. He wants to build a tower. This guy can bring in four witnesses that say, to give us a little demonstration that tells us why a power tower is great right there. He doesn't have to bring any in that oppose. So there's, you know, there's a lot of.
Tim, what do you got on this? You've been here for a minute.
So unfortunately, when this came across in twenty sixteen, I sat right there at the table with Brett, and I voted against it, if I remember correctly, because we had very few volunteers. But as I've aged and learned more as a councillor, I tend now to agree with what we did. And it's unfortunate because Susan Russell is a wonderful, wonderful person, and she would be a great addition. But I, I do understand why we did what we did. And if I remember correctly, you know, Brett was, you know, Brett was pretty much behind that. He just, for some reason, didn't have me convinced that night. But I do agree with him now on that. That's all I have.
And if we did change it, then that sets somebody up in the future for having the same.
A lot of those ordinances and, and all this stuff's written in blood, man. All this stuff's written in blood.
It was contentious then, for that ordinance winning went through. It was, I sat in those backseats. I watched it. It was.
Okay, I need a motion one way or another on this.
Motion to what?
Approve or?
Application.
So, so you appoint and we confirm. So is you that needs to, you, you're, you're going to appoint Susan or you're not going to?
No, I, I'm sorry, I can't.
Okay, so then there's nothing to do here.
Okay.
I would just say, I would ask you, Gary, if you're gonna, if you're gonna keep chatting with Susan, to just tell her that we abs, or that many of us really appreciate.
Nothing against Susan at all.
Really appreciate who she is and hope she will continue to put, pour her fabulous volunteer energy into our community in other ways, and that it's just this, this principle. So.
Just blame it on me. Okay.
Everybody knows it's my fault.
We can always blame, blame things on you, Brett.
And we do need to get back to that practice where, you know, when we do have people apply for things, give it to me ninety-nine percent of the time, it'll be good to go, but, but, yeah. We're getting back to the basics. That's the whole reason I twisted Brett's arm and to try and get back on the council, so. Okay, sorry.
That was a.
All right, so we are moving, let's see, we got our applications all done. Yep. So the work on the bus station, we had an accident where the glass broke. And correct me if I'm wrong, Joseph, but the county said that it was on us to get it fixed.
Very public transit.
Very public transit.
So I worked with, what was her name? Mary Rowe and Pamela Bernhardt, maybe? Poroford was really slow to get one of these structures, and we almost didn't want it. And Gold Beach and Brookings had gotten them, and we had our, they had one for us in a box sitting there, but we wouldn't commit to putting it in. We didn't know where we wanted to put it, this and that. And then there was the discussion, and, and believe it or not, I've, I've kind of wondered about this. There was a discussion that the homeless people will sleep in it. And we wanted to put a bar across the bench so that a guy couldn't. And I was appalled that we couldn't let one guy sleep on a bench. So anyway, but, but that was kind of my doing. And my understanding was, is that, is it was granted to us. We do have some, we have some language here, but my understanding was that it was a full grant to us, but that we needed to maintain it.
But it says here in this stuff. So are we saying that we gotta spend the money, or why is this here? I don't know.
That, I mean, it's just an insurance claim, isn't it?
Okay.
How the heck do we do that?
I'll do it.
A what, what? Or is it an insured structure?
I'm just saying, or just we instruct Public Works to.
Fix it?
Fix it.
Or do we do have to have an insurance adjuster come out?
Or we just break the rest of the windows out and just have a roof on it? I don't.
But I'm just, I, I, I just, by the way, this was on the consent calendar earlier, so I, I didn't ask that.
Just because the administrator's not that good right now.
Good.
And I didn't, I didn't direct staff correctly. So.
Do anything with this one?
Yeah, I need to call the insurance agent and, and see.
About filing a claim.
Otherwise, we just have to.
Or just have Public Works replace it, you know what I mean? It can't be that hard. It's, it's gotta be.
Okay, so I'll research a little bit, see what the deductible is, and if it's cheaper to just fix it with staff, we'll go that route. Does that sound good, everybody?
Sounds great, Pat. Thank you.
Fabulous. Yeah, I'm good.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay. So we are moving on to the Pro Tem City Admin Discussion. And the difference with this is the job description, halftime last, you know, we went half and half. Last time was the discussion, halftime admin, halftime finance. So we basically split the, the admin part out of it, and we want to advertise that. We just wanted to run, run it by you because it is different. We were directed last month to go a certain route with getting that out, even though it, you know, because we were directed to throw that application out, put that application out last month as the half and half, just to get something out there. Then we had our little hiccup. So what I'm asking now is, do you want to just go ahead and split that out and advertise them individually, or stick with, with the? So I guess what I'm trying to ask is, is everyone still okay with the job descriptions for finance and admin that we had last time? And can we take those and split them apart and advertise both?
I kind of like the idea, I don't know if we can, if it makes sense, but to, to advertise the job as a combo and then advertise them separate.
That's a good idea.
That's what I like.
We don't know.
That's what I like.
Right.
Or fish, more lines. Perfect person to do both would be there or not.
Exactly. And I did, Anne shared with me an application for a city admin from Shady Cove. They put out a pamphlet, a nice pamphlet, and they, that was full-on admin, budget, oversight, craft the budget. So it's not totally unheard of, by.
Oh, okay.
I, I, yeah, I wanted to say just a few things before, I mean, Pat, I, I think what you're getting is we have to finalize the job descriptions. So maybe I'll just say that first, but that there is this whole thing I put in about how you recruit a city administrator. Part of it is coming up with that. And check this out. I mean, this city, they put together this whole glossy thing to recruit somebody.
Recruit somebody.
And this is the kind of thing that has to happen eventually, but we have to do the job description. I'm sorry. We just.
Yeah.
That little bit of effort shows immediately how much more that city, you know, could be to me as an applicant, you know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly. It shows that.
You put that much effort into a job application, what are you gonna do for my city? So that'd be cool.
Yeah.
Okay, so I like, I like what we just talked about by, can we do all three in a sense? Can we do a combo, an admin, and a city financer?
I feel like we could. And I feel like we could, you know, get it out as fast as possible, and then start building the flyer and just ramping up. But I mean, it seems like the sooner we.
And get the interim in between, in the meantime.
Yeah, get the Pro Tem hired.
Help with the flyer.
Get the Pro Tem hired, and then we can figure out from there, but.
Well, and you kind of opened it up on the Pro Tem to give me the freedom to make that process quicker. So this is more about getting that full-time advertisement out as soon as possible. And then when the Pro Tem gets in here, we, we light the fire under them right from the get-go of, your one main objective is to find your replacement, even if it's you.
Now, one of the key questions I think we had last time, and, and. Now, one of the key questions I think we had last time, and, and, you know, Pat was saying, just thought we should bring it back because it seemed like last time that things have changed with the administrator gone. We were talking also about like doing full-time administrator or part-time finance director or trying to do, uh.
I think that's the only other way it could go. I can't see half-part-time administrator.
No.
So full-time administrator, part-time finance director.
I think you find, um, an administrator who is strong with his numbers. And, and I think that we have in-house some talent that could be, um, trained up for that. And we've done it before and it was quite successful in, in Dave Johnson. And he has, he's here, he's saving us right now. And part of it may be because of, he may feel some commitment to the city because of what we did in training him.
And I think he'd be willing to help us with some training, I think, I hope, for the finance director person.
We don't have the talent that we need here.
So my big thing that, again, on this finance director, like approving again, is if we, the job, adopt job description and pay scale for finance director. I, I just don't like, I don't like the adopting of the pay scale part of it, cause then it immediately locks us into, when we had an administrator, to me, that meant that night he got a raise. You know what I mean? Like, does that make sense? Even though now we don't have one, so it's not as a sticking point for me. But again, it's on that, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I don't understand, I kind of feel like we almost need to do a little bit more research on these.
I think he did, he did a lot of, oh, on the, on this, on that.
Well, this is the combined one. And then, I mean, I think he started it at more like step four and then we just said, oh, start it down at seventy-five. But in some of the conversations I've been having, like, I just learned that, you know, Banden just hired its new person for like a hundred and fifty thousand. They're a much bigger city than we are, but as I'm starting to listen and look.
Yeah.
You know, and this is the kind of work that our, our Pro Tem city administrator was doing. He was out looking at what are they charging and what are they paying? And so, you know, it does make it seem like, yeah, seventy-five thousand is like.
Small.
But what if we advertised at a low rate for admin and we advertised at the lower rate for finance? And then we combine those rates for the combined position?
You know what I mean?
That's what it was.
Come and, and advertise, say, yeah, I can do your budget, I can do it all.
Then we have the money from those two wages, you know what I mean? Like, if you're paying somebody seventy and seventy, then theoretically you'd have.
Hundred and forty.
Yeah. Except I don't think we can get anybody to do, if we were gonna try to hire an administrator for seventy thousand, I don't think we could get anybody. And so what I'm thinking, so I, I, I forgot to scrape this out, but I'm trying to think about where are we gonna get the money for this? And so, um, Tim and, Tim Pogswood and I were talking about this and asked David Johnson to go back and look, you know, is there money gonna be available? And we have paid a lot of money in recent years for audits, you know, because we haven't had a qualified financial director. And so, you know, I'm hoping, I, I, I still don't understand how we pulled this all together. But I'm hoping that there will be money there if we can.
Not screw up.
Not screw up. And if we get the right person, and that's, that, anyway.
Another option we could do is put all these advertisements out with no wage on them, just to get people calling. You know, cause you don't have to put a wage on them.
On your thing right there, does it have a wage on your glossy?
Yeah, it does. Hundred and thirty to.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, if we're gonna try to go off something cool like that, I'd rather see exactly what they say.
On the bottom of the second page.
You could, you could put a maximum wage or something. That's, ooh, you know what I mean, like a fish, you're like, oh, maximum wage, you know?
Yeah, this salary range is one fifteen to one thirty-five. And so that's for a city that's bigger than us. So, but you know.
You can always say salary dependent on experience, you know?
Yes, right. But you could say salary range, I mean, I, I'm thinking if we could, you know, I don't know if we have to adopt the whole step thing now, but if we could come up with a range and maybe look at some other cities and come up with something like, I mean, I feel like we're gonna, it's like, almost like we have to do a supplemental budget. I'm, I've been trying to ask David, how do we figure out the amount of money we have to work with? And he has kind of said what John said, well, let's take the amount that we've been using, which is forty and seventy. And so that's not a heck of a lot.
One, yeah, hundred and ten, hundred and fifty.
But we were paying ninety at one time for the administrator and then we were paying David seventy or.
Well, I mean, this.
So I, where did that, isn't that money?
Audit, I mean, I imagine the audit, um.
Well, that's, yeah, the audit money.
Come out of, out of salaries?
Well, I don't know that, but it wasn't budgeted because that position wasn't, I imagine it wasn't, but I'm just saying, I don't think we budgeted or.
Audit.
Yeah, cause you guys changed a couple of years ago, I think, when you changed the position to do a combined position. And I think that that, in, in my impression, it's probably was not a success because of.
Didn't start that way though, because we hired, um, someone that was here for six months or so. And then we just didn't hire somebody. So it wasn't like we.
Okay.
Hired the administrator to do both. She just started doing both.
What if we just wait, like, we, we get the description down and then we just ask Dave if he can tell us what we have in the bank? Like, what we can feasibly offer someone, cause that's, I mean, we can, like, I mean, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. And we have someone that, that hopefully could tell us, you know, based on where we're at right now, not what traditionally has been, but like, from where we're at.
Right.
What can we do? And we could kind of sort of get the job description hammered down and you guys could say, once we get, once we get that number back from Dave, that's what we'll advertise.
And I, I kind of tried to get him to answer that, but maybe we have to drill down a little farther with him. Because he, he kind of said, we'll just go with those number. I think at that point, he was sort of supporting the combo.
Right.
Idea. And I think if, but I think he also would support from other conversations, getting somebody who's a finance director who really knows what they're doing, cause it's kind of, will save us money in the long.
But I'm wondering too, the, from what Brett was saying and what David had done when he first got here.
Yeah.
If, say, we have, we have.
That idea is that we will be starting a new, every single painting, I mean, we know exactly what's going on right now, everybody does. There's no guesswork, who did what to who in the dark, um, with the candlestick. There's just, it's regular, we know what it is. And then it's just maintenance.
So if we wanted to do, like, if we wanted to hire somebody from within for the administrator or finance director position, wouldn't we still have to advertise the position? Isn't there like the hiring process? We have to actually have a.
Oh, and they would be an applicant.
They would have to be an applicant, right?
No, and then you don't have to hire. You could put out and, and then you can take your applicants and say, and throw them all in the trash and don't even carry forward, I mean.
As long as you go through the steps, uh-huh.
Yeah, you said, you just gotta do it right.
Cause, yeah, cause it could be that we could have a recorder or finance director.
There's.
You know, I mean, there's different combinations that would be possible if that was.
We're like, so currently, we're about a half of a employee above where we were when I was on council previously. But, um, that's just what happened. And so if you can take that half and, and, and put it in the right place, then you get rid of the other hole and now you're half below.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna work.
I mean.
I think we have too much going on.
No, no, I don't say, I'm not saying get rid of anybody. I'm just saying that you, you don't have to have, well, I, I think in a, you know, I keep thinking of Bev, she was, she's, we say she's nine hundred and thirty-two years old. And, um, she, she, I'm certain of it. But she was great. And, and she got it, she did a really good job.
But those were different days.
It was twenty hours. She worked, she was a part-time employee, so.
I'm just saying that there's, that what goes on in City Hall now is so much different than what went on before COVID.
This was when, this was when we were doing the golf course and uh, medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. I mean, it was pretty hot around here. It was pretty hot around here, but she didn't know it was hot. I mean, she, she just did her thing, you know what I mean? Thinking outside the box can be useful, you know, maybe this isn't the time to do that, but. Like, like, like what, whoever maybe was Anne, you know, we, we don't know what we got, you know, what, what can we afford to pay?
Hey, Pat?
Yes.
Just so you know, Perry's got her hand up, that's the only thing I had.
Oh, thank you. I'll get to you right after Brett.
You're welcome.
Where is Perry?
She got no camera.
She has no camera.
How's she got her hand up?
She raised her hand a little.
Oh, the little push button?
Go ahead, Perry.
Do I get to talk? Okay, so I just wanted to say, I think that, um, when the decision on whether to advertise as two positions or one position, I think, uh, comes down to largely how you craft your advertisement. I think you can say that this position could be expanded to include blah, blah, blah. You know, for the city administrator, it could be expanded to include finance director with right candidate or something like that. I think that we just need to be really explicit and, and kind of flowery in our advertising and who knows who we'll get.
That's good, Perry.
Yeah, that's a really good idea, cause I, I'm a little bit worried about putting out three different things, cause it would seem really.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Confusing.
Yeah, confusing.
They'd be even, they wouldn't even be in the same category. Like, like, uh, finance director wouldn't be in the same category as a, like, if you're looking through the help wanted ads or whatever, it's like, um, the burger flipper's not gonna be in the same category as the tire changer. You know what I mean? You're not gonna say, well, this rotten, these rotten people, they wanna, you know, they didn't even know, cause I'm gonna know that, uh.
Well, it depends on where you're looking.
I, well, okay, yeah, if it's just the Porford paper, but I think that we ought to look, look a little deeper than that.
Yeah, League of Oriented Cities, Anne's already like delving into that pretty deep. She's found what, four candidates or three candidates?
Yeah, well, those are the, those are the interim candidates.
Right.
But those are places, you know, I mentioned Gary's already put it out, once we, and I, there's some other networks that we can put it out on. That'll be the, will be the very, probably very good networks of people who have the, have these skills. And then I know, you know, then we could put it also out in the newspapers in our local area to see if there are people who are retired that have commensurate skills. I, I think from my little experience of being here, we really do need somebody who has experience in government. I think, um, I mean, I'd like to see that, not to say that there couldn't be a candidate that, um, could come from outside, but I think that would be a tremendous benefit to get somebody with experience.
And that's included in the, uh, in the requirements, in the job description.
So what, I'm not saying this, cause I'm the half-admin right now or whatever, but what would the council normally be doing for this issue? We'd be discussing if we want a halftime or part-time and the wages, obviously. But, I mean, that's the council's decision. We don't have an admin right now, so we have to talk about it. But regularly, it would be, we'd give them the numbers, the positions, and then they, they'd execute. Cause we could talk about this for three hours and it's super important.
So I think we kind of have to figure out who's gonna execute it. And we're gonna have to like have a committee to execute it, I think, is the bottom line, now that we don't, until we get. So, is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying that we're not getting any traction and trying to narrow it down to those first two questions of wage. And I think we have, I think we have a plan, well, like, we started with advertising all three. There is, there were some pitfalls that Anne brought up, but then Perry kind of clarified that if we write it correctly and put, you know, that these could be combined, then that's a pretty good route forward.
Yeah.
That kind of hits two birds with one stone. And, you know, last, at the last meeting, we also had this idea that we just have to start. And we may learn that we're gonna fail and then we have to adjust.
But the sooner we make the first move, the sooner we can evolve.
Anne, Brett and Tim, would you three be willing to put your heads together and work on this?
Sure.
Yeah, I agree.
My fear is that if you put, there's the highly specialized careers. And when you're asking for a person to have those highly specialized traits twice, you know what I mean? I don't know. But you see, just a tiny bit bigger town of us has comparable to a hundred and fifteen thousand, so we're right in the ballpark if we're combined, like they're combining.
Yeah, no, they're right.
So it's not unheard of.
No, that's why I think all three of them.
That position for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is an administrator that makes the budget and does financial.
That's what I mean, that's a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty. So it's right, you know, if you combined the seventy and forty, we're really close as it is. So that's why I think we should really go forward, both, but also the combo like that really is, is appealing. Obviously, it's appealing if that, if somebody else already put in that much effort.
This is what says, says responsibilities include development and control of annual budget, financial reporting, personnel recruiting and all that. The other big thing that came up at the, at the last meeting that we discussed was the whole thing about the having due diligence, having financial separation, so that there is sort of.
The internal control.
Internal control. So that was another thing that seemed important. And it might be, you know, part of me feels like this is gonna come down to in part what candidates we have. And yet, um, we're just gonna have to be very careful about that.
We have to be as fluid as we can so that we can accommodate whoever we have coming in.
What did we do last time? Let's not do that. Well, it's not, I mean, surrounding towns around us, it's not like, right now, city admins seem to be sort of a, a, a.
Gary told us.
We had to sacrifice the A-frame for a while, so if city admin could live here, it would be worth considering.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Got it. Alright.
I don't want to, I know, it's scheduled, but if, like, if the housing is an issue.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. That's a house we got in town.
And they'd have a new playground there, so that's. Okay, so how are we gonna gain traction on this? Uh.
You're gonna appoint an interim tomorrow.
Okay.
And then that'll, that'll be.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna appoint, yeah.
Okay, so I didn't mean to, like, appoint you three really quickly, I'm just trying to.
Now, who did you appoint?
I don't know, I.
Who did you appoint? I didn't quite hear it.
I, well, I didn't appoint, I asked if you and Brett and Tim would be willing to put your heads together and, and.
Come back with something on the fifth for this full-time position. I sure would like to get advertised as fast as possible.
The full-time position would be mirror that, right?
Yeah.
Pretty simple. Can we just split those two in half then? And then just, you know, split those, you know, do all three. I'm down with doing all three. We don't even, we can just do this tonight and just start doing.
Cause we can refine it.
Yeah, we can totally, we can put it out there and if we don't like the way it looks, we can refine it later, but getting it out there is, it's not hard to go back and just.
And put the amount depending on their experience. I like that Perry said.
But, but not advertising anything is getting us nothing. So getting it, I mean, and waiting until the fifth isn't getting us anything. So I agree with, honestly, I agree with putting out three job descriptions. One for a combo, one for a finance director, one for that, and then, then we go from that. On, you know, cause you were trying right now actively to get a, a Pro Tem, so we'll do that, but we need to start as quick as we can.
So is everyone okay with the job descriptions that we had presented last month? I mean, I know we went forward with those, but is it okay to split those? I mean, do the full thing and then split those up?
As long as we don't.
Hey, hey, Pat?
Yes.
Can, can I comment on the, so, so the combo thing? This is just my point of view, it's not against anybody's idea. It makes us look as a city and a city council like we don't know what we want if we put those out and we don't have a good description such as Perry suggested. So hopefully we'll follow, you know, what Perry said and, and make that sound a little more eloquent than looking for three different positions, because these people do see that on the list, sir, listserv, they're professionals. They're gonna see all three of those and they're gonna, in my mind, they're gonna think, what is this city really want? Do they even know what they want? And that scares me.
Yeah, good city manager.
Right, yeah. Cause then they, you know, they're not necessarily gonna be interested in working for a city that can't figure out what they really want.
Well, we know what we want.
I like your idea, Pat, of, of appointing a committee, I think that's the smartest thing.
But that was to.
With a full-time position, to craft the job application or applications.
I don't know.
Advertising, not application.
Oh, right, advertisement.
So for, for many years, this worked.
Right.
A full-time administrator and a, and a CFO.
Right.
For many, many years, this worked. And so the departure from this, this, um, norm is, I, I guess it's kind of troubling to me, I don't.
this, this, um, norm is, I, I guess it's kind of troubling to me. I don't understand it.
Well, and we have new positions.
It's because of the amount of money that it's going to cost to get the
Well, so we spent a lot of money on paying for, um, audit, right? And that's your salary.
And the labor negotiations last time, apparently, cost like seventy-five thousand dollars, I keep hearing.
I think there's a, there's a, I, I think, I think there's some unfortunate things that had occurred that had really hammered our purse here. And, and, um, I, I suppose you can always expect the unexpected, right? But to that tune, you know, to the, to the three hundred thousand dollar mark or something like that, I don't know. But have, has everybody talked to David Johnson about how much money we have?
Have we? Yo. I don't know why that happened. Does, so does everybody know where we're at with money?
Well, Ann had talked to him.
Right, and your, your understanding is what, Ann?
Well, my understanding is that we've been spending a lot of money, and in about three years, we're going to have a major shortfall. We're, we're putting a lot of general fund money into public safety in a way that we hadn't in the past. Um, I'm looking at, I'm foreseeing a lot of water issues as our water system gets worse. But I, I mean, I don't think David thinks it's totally dire. You know, I think he, he was saying he's, thinks we need to be careful, but it's not like we're going over a cliff yet. But I think he thinks in the next three years, we have to be careful. That's what'd be my take.
I think getting the right employees here is going to be a big part of that, that we get somebody to help organize these grants and
Yeah.
bringing more money into the coffers.
Yeah.
Just the bottom line, we need more money than we're bringing in.
Yeah.
And there's, there's only so many ways you can spend less money.
Well, it, it's, the age old, you know, we don't have a spending problem, we have a revenue problem.
Well, and he has said, like, okay, so on planning, for example, that we need to go back and probably look at our fee rates and raise our fees to help make sure that that department is not fucking, you know, dry. Um, or, you know, so I think in the next budget, and this is the question, if he can be around, I mean, if we could have somebody who could help us set it up.
Are, are the, uh, tax, the marijuana tax, uh, applications sent in before, before John left? Because we've been missing the, we've been missing that money. There's
Been collecting it.
Every little bit of
Oh, the state, the, I don't know, the, the
Yeah, the state money.
The local three percent we've been collecting.
State, we need our chunk of the state money is what we need. Uh, it's just another check, you know what I mean? Every little bit helps, but, um, that's something that we've
How do we know? How do you know we're not getting it? Why wouldn't we just get it?
It's never shown, because you have to apply for it.
Okay.
And, and, Ray, we didn't, we had limited
It got, it got denied at first, and then written before I got on council in twenty twenty, it was approved.
It was approved.
It was approved, and then, uh, twenty twenty-one, when Pops took over, they've been paying their taxes since
The, to the city.
Current establishment.
Yeah, to the city. So we, what we need is that money, because it's desert, uh, so that's public safety and education money.
It's, it's a pool, it's a pool money. Seventeen percent of the, of the marijuana
Of the sales, right, the state.
Is
Right.
Pool money.
But it's intended for
Yes, all sorts of different
Law enforcement and education.
Law enforcement.
And so, since, because that's one of our shortfalls,
Yeah.
to not be pursuing that
If we're not in the coffer of it.
I got to bring us back to descriptions, though. We got, like, are these descriptions okay? I mean, are, like, the question is, is are we going to do this committee? Are we going to break these down and do the flyer? And, and, uh, go from there?
Because we can either do a committee.
We're going to make one of those?
Well, I don't, I, I have to see what the format is. I mean, like, this, I think, looks like, I don't know where this came from or how somebody would get this.
No, we can design that very easily.
Yes, I know, but how does this go out? You know what?
Props it up and
But does it, on the, on this listserv, you know, I don't know. Can you upload a PDF? I don't know. I don't know the format, because I don't have access to that.
And, and, yeah, and how much more does that benefit than just the regular posting on
Probably you do that right now, because I'm saying that's something to look forward to, that we could do, you know what I mean?
If we weren't getting any applicants and
Yeah.
Yeah.
That seems like something that would be in a, in a, um, post office or
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a real estate office.
But I mean, that'd just take somebody with legs to go around
Well, we were very lucky when we got Gary, because that was just like a phone call, and that ball got rolling, you know, and that, so
But, you know, I mean, the other thing is, I know advertising is important, but literally, when I'm talking to people, like, the guy at CCD is like, oh, I know a bunch of city administrators. CCD said they can put it out, too. Or, you know, so I, I think that the, I think that there's sort of this whole network that will benefit us.
It might be worth calling CCD and ask them if they could help us craft the posting.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah. We could take a, we could take
League of Oregon Cities, are we not?
No, that, them too, but
Well, I contacted them, and that's what we got. We got this guidebook that tells you how to do it. So this guidebook that tells you how to do it has all the steps. It tells you what your job description should include. It though, you know, so it's not like, I mean, I would propose we just, the committee follows this. I mean, this is as best we can. It's all these steps, so
Do we get a, is there an assistance, uh, grant that comes with, you know, how sometimes you get so many hours of, of
No.
Assistance or not?
No. Their, their whole thing is, they make it sound like they're really going to help you, but really, all they do is, like, give you a book. So if we're going to do this, like, this job description, I assume, Joseph, do you have this? Or is this on John Huddle's computer?
I have a copy.
You have a copy? Okay. So we'd have to split it out. I mean, basically, I don't, this is not rocket science. This job description is what we've been using forever. We separate them out, we put them up. If we want to do something that looks better, because I think we want to, you know, this description of our city, um, while it's good, it really doesn't say anything great about our city. It just kind of says, you know, we have this many people and a sewer treatment plant. I mean, it doesn't say, like, you know
Well, I mean, aren't you proud of that?
I am, especially since it just got gold star, uh, passed the
Better than not having one.
So this is the second job description I've seen today that includes financial management from the administrator. It's on page nineteen, uh...
Page nineteen of what are, oh, yeah, what are you looking at?
On the League of Oregon Cities, on the guideline. The manager must have skills and knowledge to oversee the balance of utilities to ensure citizens can count on receiving the services for use. Oh, yeah, the first part. Successful candidate will have working knowledge of Oregon's budget laws and will be able to deal creatively with declining revenues and remitary resources. Uh, so that doesn't touch on it, but it did, in the experience part, say that, you know, it, like, that graduated experience of head of department to finance manager to admin is, this is a hell of a good description right here.
Well, I'm wondering if we did two positions. We did a finance director, and we did an administrator with what Perry mentioned, that we would, we were considering
Yeah.
the dual position if the person, for the right person.
Yeah. I kind of like to do, I kind of like the idea of doing the full-on administrator and, um, maybe the part-time finance director with the idea that we try to grow it back up. And, I mean, the finance director could be doing some of the grant work. You know, that's what David said. He used to do more of that. Um, I mean, ideally, we get to that, but in some ways, you know, the city administrator has the role of hiring the finance director. I mean, ideally, this administrator of the city assembles their staff configuration. And, I mean, we want to have our hand in that because of all of the permutations. But on the other hand, you know, if this, like, we just had with the recent interim person, he didn't have the finance part at all. And so he clawed back David Johnson. What a success, because he realized, I need to have that, and he got it. Um, so there's more than one way to skin a cat, but we need to have, we need to find the administrator who can do that. Anyway, so for that reason, I, I mean, I think kind of leading with the full, I, I kind of like the idea of leading with a full-time administrator and a half-time finance director. But, Wes, were you saying in the past that there was just, it was impossible to find the half-time finance director?
Well, it might not be if we, there could be a, somebody already on staff that could
Yes, right, yeah. So that might be
A way of
A way of doing that, you know?
Because I, I mean, I, I have no idea, but you could combine it with another
Position.
Position that's going on, and then it's part-time.
Yeah, right.
And, um...
Which might be more feasible than it has been in the past.
I mean, yeah, we might have a perfect fit.
Well, two people, they
Right, that's true. Yep.
So, I mean, I, so that would be my gut feeling, is we go with a job description for the city administrator and part-time finance director. And then with the city administrator, we do what, like what Perry says, for the right candidate, this could be expanded with a commensurate pay increase if somebody has the skills, you know, we would consider that.
We're doing everything that the three would do, I think.
Why don't we start with that? I mean, that seems like
Yeah, I like that.
But we should definitely have the wordage for the admin that says you should have financial experience and that you can run the budget.
Can we just copy exactly what that thing
That's, I mean, it's the guide to recruiting a city administrator. All we'd have to do is change independence to port order.
But, but there's a little, don't you think there's a little bit of difference in that? I mean, the, the person who's the manager needs to have, like, the knowledge of how it all works, but they don't have, like, the granular knowledge, you know, of like
Putting it actually together.
Putting it together.
I'm not trying to be rude, but I manage a port and make the budget and, and do all that. I know the city is bigger, but if someone has experience in it, like, it's part of the job. But all these job descriptions have the finance, because you got to have two people that can do it, like, and that's why I like the half-time finance, because they're doing the nuts and bolts and they're keeping everything, but you still have someone that's overseeing it. Like, I don't, I mean, the finance director, director's the finance, but the administrator should be the one that's, you know, well, we tell the administrator, you know, obviously with the budget process and all that, and then the finance director is
Yeah, and then it's also probably unlike the situation we've had, where we're all like, oh, my God, we got to call David Johnson. What do we, you know? We actually have an administrator who is thinking big picture and is saying, okay, we need more revenue. We have water problems. We've got to, like, focus on these water grants, or we got to
Right, and it's what we focus on in the interview process, really, you know?
Yeah.
What's, what's going to hammer it out in the wire? What are you laughing at?
Oh, nothing. It was good stuff.
So I like that. I, do we need a motion for that?
Uh, I think so. Or just a consensus, uh, unless you want to make a motion to do what you just said, Ann.
Okay, I propose that we, I'll make a motion to propose that we develop two job descriptions. One for a full-time city administrator, um, that has the potential to be expanded to include finance director if the person has commensurate experience, but that has full, that, but we are going to expect financial knowledge. And then a half-time finance director.
A second.
First and a second? Sorry, I started discussing too early. But I think it's imperative that we advertise in a way that the administrator is the financial advisor, too. Or, you know, that, like, I don't want to say, oh, it's okay, we're, we have a finance manager, so if you're weak on that, like, I think it's super important that our full-time candidate is, is dialed in on the budget.
And I remember
Question one, how many budgets have you crafted?
And I know Tim had mentioned that. That was a really important thing at the last meeting. He mentioned that as well. And the more, I, I think that is important.
The rarity is what helps with the resources on budget, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Because you can take that, you could take last year's budget and, and largely add, you know, five percent to it or whatever the CPI is this year, and come up with some pretty decent ballpark numbers. But if you don't know what, if you're not familiar with your resources, then you're putting a resource in that doesn't even come this year. You know what I mean?
Or it took you ten years to build that resource, and you're looking two years back and not, and, and thinking
There's some savviness that's, some local knowledge is helpful, I think.
I think we've got a good start. I think we've got a good start. I mean, hearing all this. So the question is, then, what is our process? So let's say, if I take a crack at writing this or crafting it a little bit more, do we have the committee review it, or do we
Back on the fifth.
Is that too long?
No, I mean, they would say
No, because we got the, okay, on the pro temp recruitment.
Thing, so this is the fifth, this is like the next progression, right?
Okay.
That, I would say, yes, the fifth works, you know, so
Okay.
Yeah, we have a first and a second. Do we need to
Gives you some time to
Oh, yeah, we should vote on that.
Let's vote, let's vote on the, let's vote on the, what you proposed.
Don't run my main. Details, details.
Hey, I'm just trying, guys.
Okay, I'm going to call for the vote on that. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
And Counselor Tidy?
Yes. Moving forward.
Awesome. Uh, okay, I lost page two again. Oh, found it. We are on, well, we did continuing action items. Any considerations from the public? Any considerations from the public online? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Uh, so now we are going to go into executive session. Uh, let's see, this is still the correct ORS. So I'm going to go ahead and open up this exec, oh, I need a motion to move into executive session, don't I, Brett?
And you need to read the numbers. You got the numbers?
Yeah, it's, uh, one nine two point six six zero two B to consider dismissal, disciplining of, or hear complaints or charges.
You still ordering?
I will. Okay, I, I moved to go
I move to, uh, go into the executive session under ORS one nine two dot six six zero two B to consider dismissal or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent who does not request an open hearing. Uh, employee grievances.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, call for the vote, Greg?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Brett?
Webb, yes.
Valisis?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes. Will Perry and I transfer into this executive session automatically?
Yes.
Yeah, they found a way to mute everybody else.
Okay.
Everyone else will, we'll kick them out.
Okay, and Joseph has some materials to hand out. One, we're doing the closing executive session. The other two got moved to the fifth.
Now, is there a way to pull it, lock it? So technically, nobody can come now into our session. Perry, Perry, did you hear us, correct?
Yes.
Right, nobody else can come in. If you keep an eye over here, please.
Yeah.
That way, but that's it. Everything else is locked. As soon as that gets locked, nobody can come in to this. We can try, I can try really quick. Yeah, you can try, yeah, totally try to, yeah, yeah. That makes sense. I like that.
Yeah, no, that makes real good sense.
Lost Dan.
Oh, yeah, can we get, uh, those materials?
I'll do that while you attempt to
Thank you, sir.
Thank
What is in this? What is this? This is just, oh, extras packet.
Oh, all right. Arm circle.
Perry, do you want a copy of your paper packet for
My ankles.
Staring. The pile.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to get it, but, no, it's okay. I don't need a copy.
I think, because, I mean, we can just save it and have it here for you, and you can pick it up if you want to have
You're going to need that for your pile.
Yeah. Yeah.
We had to take those back after executive session all the materials come back to me.
This is just her regular packet.
Right.
I we're I'm sorry we were I I wasn't listening I was trying to I'm sorry Anne.
No worries.
Did you read that did you ever get that book that was about Leon?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, it wasn't that wonderful?
Man, yeah, that was amazing I always look at his picture there and
My my neighbor was his niece so she gave me the book and
Oh.
Of Leon.
Alan Mitchell gave me one. Amazing what went on.
It was about Leon White when he was my
No, I should.